Eddie, um, welcome. I'll call the meeting to order at nine AM. And I'd like to start with acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. And now I will ask everybody to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Osmond?
Administration has no agenda, uh, additions this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and before we get started, I just want to acknowledge that Counselor Gamanna is not with us this morning. He has gone home to Sri Lanka. Uh, his mother passed away, so our condolences and, uh, thoughts and prayers are with him and his family and, uh, that he has safe travels. He'll be gone about three weeks, so our thoughts are with him. Uh, is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Sheriffs, all in favor? That is carried. Uh, are there any corrections or amendments to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meetings of council? September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two statutory public hearing amending bylaw twenty twenty-two zero eight D? None. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the September fourteenth regular meeting of councilmen at September fourteenth statutory public hearing amending bylaw? Counselor Clark, all in favor? Seen him out of the corner of my eye there. And we are going to jump into our proclamations. Uh, we have a couple today. The first proclamation is World Polio Day. It is October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas Rotary's efforts with the Global Polio Eradication Initiative have reduced polio cases by ninety-nine point nine percent since the first project to vaccinate children in the Philippines in nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas Rotary has contributed more than US, or more than two-point-one US dollars, two-point-one billion US dollars, that's a mouthful, and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than two-point-five billion children in a hundred and twenty-two countries. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than ten billion dollars to the effort. And whereas over one-point-two million Rotary members in more than thirty-five thousand clubs across the world sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Therefore, I, Mayor Nancy Dodds, on behalf of the Council of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two as World Polio Day in the town of Drayton Valley. And I encourage all citizens to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Our second proclamation this morning is for Small Business Week. That is October seventeenth to the twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. Whereas Small Business Week is a national event to pay tribute to the contribution that small businesses make to the Canadian economy. And whereas we honor entrepreneurs who take a risk on an idea, choose to invest in our community, and create jobs for others. And whereas with approximately six-hundred-and-ninety-three current business licenses registered with the town of Drayton Valley, the Drayton Valley community is a vital contributor to the economic health and social well-being of the community. And I now, therefore, I, Nancy Dodds, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim the week, September seventeenth to the twenty-first of twenty twenty-two, as Small Business Week. October is a busy month. And in addition to the World Polio and Small Business Week, I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize the Day of Older Persons was on October first. World Cerebral Palsy Day was on October sixth. World Mental Health Day was on October tenth. National Teen Driver Safety Week is from October fourteenth and twentieth. Women's History Month is October first to the thirty-first all month. And Alberta Foster and Kinship Caregiver Month is October first to the thirty-first. Special days, weeks, and months help to strengthen cultural awareness, remember historic events, and inspire residents to take action or get involved in important causes. So it is definitely a busy month. And then we, of course, we have Halloween and lots of parties that'll be happening too towards the end of the month. There's some fantastic haunted houses in the community, so hopefully people will have a opportunity to go out and, um, get the pants scared off of you. We're going to jump into our public hearings this morning. Um, we have two of them. The first one is October twelfth statutory public hearing agenda for proposed amending bylaw twenty twenty-two dash ten D Controlled Substance Separation Space. And I will declare the public hearing open at nine oh eight AM for bylaw twenty twenty-two dash ten dash D amending bylaw for Controlled Substance Separation Space. Those present today are myself, uh, council, administration, members of the public, and those online. The purpose of the public hearing today is to receive comments, concern, and questions from the public regarding proposed text amendments, changes to the cannabis processing micro and standard, retail cannabis, retail liquor, and glossary sections of Land Use Bylaw twenty twenty-twelve D. Administration is proposing text amendments to the Land Use Bylaw as it pertains to separation distances for controlled substances, including cannabis and liquor. Amendments sought include increasing separation distance from cannabis processing to two-hundred meters from the one-hundred-and-fifty meters, ensuring that retail cannabis and retail liquor separation requirements are consistent with each other by adding religious assembly to retail cannabis separation requirements, redefining the separation measurements' distance to occur from building footprint of retail bay rather than the property line, additions of various subclass definitions to the glossary. A decision on this bylaw may be made today depending upon the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley's bylaw twenty eighteen zero seven A. This is our electronic advertising bylaw. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, either written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. I will now call for comments from administration.
Good morning, your worship and fellow council members. Pertaining to today's public hearing regarding amending bylaw twenty twenty-two dash ten dash D, which is Controlled Substance Separation Space, administration has received no comments from the public back, neither in support nor opposition. Administration's comments will be delivered as part of the subsequent request for decision pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I will now call for comments from anyone on the floor. Any comments from the floor? Did you want to say anything? Absolutely, I would ask you to come up to the mic, please. That's okay.
Okay, I don't do well speaking in public, but I feel very strongly about what's going on here. And I, I just don't understand why you guys will not adopt a cap on these liquor stores and cannabis stores. Now, obviously, I own a cannabis store, but I'm not in as bad a shape as what the liquor stores are. I know several of these liquor stores are small business owners. And you guys just keep allowing more stores and more stores to come into town when these guys are struggling as it is. Like, their share of the market is just getting smaller and smaller until you guys are going to push them out of business and allow these big-box stores to come in, like Ace Liquor. They don't care what they sell their liquor for. I know firsthand who owns that. And if they have to sell it at cost, they will, until these other little guys are going to be out of business who have supported this town. My God, I've been here close to fifty years, for heaven's sakes, supporting this town. And you guys just keep adding more stores and more, six, there's going to be six cannabis stores in this town in a population of this size? Like, there's towns that are capping their, their allowed stores in, in their town. Some are not, aren't even allowing the stores into their town. Good for them. But good for the ones that are capping it too, because this is, is absolutely getting ridiculous. And I know, Tom, you were in business for a long time in Drayton Valley. And good for you that you did it when you did, because you might not feel about free enterprise if those big-box stores were in town when you were in business, to give people the options. Like, you were the only, only one in town. So it's easy to say, whoa, yeah, free enterprise. But you're not in business anymore to know what it's like with these big-box stores coming to this town. And I agree, we need free enterprise. I totally get that. But there comes a limit. Come on, you guys. Like, how many liquor stores have you got in this town? Fourteen or probably more? I have no idea. And six cannabis stores? That's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. And I'm just really upset with the town that they haven't taken their, their, like, this pulling together out front. Like, what is that about? Like, don't you feel you need to pull together for your residents of this town that have supported it for so many years? Like, I know three of the, of the cannabis stores in town. Their families have supported this town for forty, fifty years. They've raised their families here. Their kids have raised their families here, myself included. We all support this town. And, but you guys just don't see it that way. It's free enterprise. Well, I really need you to consider getting rid of that idea. Like, let's cap things. Never mind about putting distances. You have enough. You have enough stores. And I don't know, I'm just, it's just going to get to the point where all these little stores, and you're not going to get your tax dollars from them, because these stores are going to be closing. I know three liquor stores already that are barely making it. And now there's another one coming in. Like, oh, my Lord. I'm just, you guys really, really need to discuss that. I would love for you to see it from our side. See it from our side. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much for that. I will now call for comments from anyone online. Uh, they own Spirit Leaf. Are there any comments, uh, from anyone online? Nope? Okay, I will declare the public hearing closed at nine fifteen AM. And we'll move to our second public hearing, uh, non-statutory public hearing. Um, I declare public hearing open at nine fifteen AM for development permit application DV twenty-two dash zero four eight. Those present today are myself, council, administration, members of the public, and those that are online. The purpose of the public hearing today is to receive comment, concern, and questions from the public regarding the proposed discretionary use of a care facility, childcare, at five-one-three-seven Fiftieth Avenue. Administration received a development permit application to change the use of fifty-one-three-seven Fiftieth Avenue to allow for a care facility, childcare. The property is zoned CGEN, which is Commercial General District, where care facilities, child, including daycare and daycare-related uses, is considered a discretionary use. Discretionary uses must be decided by town council acting as municipal planning commission per Land Use Bylaw Section one-point-one-three-C. A decision on this application may be made today depending upon the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley's bylaw twenty eighteen zero seven A, which is our electronic advertising bylaw. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, either written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of this public hearing today. I will now call for comments from administration.
Morning again. Uh, pertaining to today's public hearing regarding discretionary use development permit DV twenty-two dash zero four eight for a care facility, child, at five-one-three-seven Fiftieth Avenue. Administration has received no comments from the public back, neither in support nor opposition. Administration's comments will be delivered as part of the subsequent request for decision pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I will now call for comments from the floor. I'll call for comments for anyone online. None. And I'll declare the public hearing is closed at nine seventeen AM. So we had our two public hearings, and now we move into our decision items. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to wait, um, as the, um, the public hearing that we did have for the cannabis and retail, we jump into right now. So I'm not sure if you wanted to listen to that. Okay. No, 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 I just wasn't sure if you were aware. So I just wanted to let you know that that's kind of the process of our agendas, that we do our public hearings. And then we do have a couple, um, uh, delegations, and then, which are, uh, ten minutes each, and then we move into our decision items. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. It may be, you know, up to thirty minutes still, so I wasn't sure. Just, I thought maybe you thought that that was it. And we will, we do appreciate that, your comments, and we will discuss them once the decision item comes. Um, so regular council will run all day. And so the process is, is that, um, next we move into delegations. We have three delegations today. And they're about ten minutes each for the delegations. And then we start to, um, jump into our decision items. So nine-point-one is our amending bylaw, which we just had the public hearing for. So that'll probably be around, um, ten fifteen, ten thirty, I'm going to say roughly, for that. So I just wasn't sure if you wanted to still stick around. Sure. Yeah, if you want to, you're more than welcome to, absolutely. Okay. Mr. Osmond?
Uh, sorry for the interruption. We do have on the agenda item six-point-three. It's a third public hearing.
Oh, okay, over there, we do have one more public hearing. I just didn't want to, I, to lose them. They were just getting up, so I thought just in case. Uh, we do have one more public hearing. Um, October twelfth, non-statutory public hearing agenda for discretionary use development permit DV twenty-two dash zero four-six, seven-three-zero-six, Township Road, uh, four-eighty-five, A. Oh, I don't have it in my... Thank you for that. Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open at nine nineteen AM for development permit application. Oh, this is oh-six. Is that the right one? Okay, it is. So DV twenty-two dash zero four-six, I thought it was four-eighty-five. I was looking at the address rather than the, um, the permit application. Those present are myself, council, members of administration, uh, those online, and the public. The purpose of the public hearing today is to receive comment, concern, and questions from the public regarding the proposed discretionary use of a single detached dwelling, which is a new building at seventy-three oh-six, Township Road, four-eighty-five A, formerly the northwestern corner of southwest of thirty through forty-eighth, um, seven west of the fifth meridian as a continuation from subdivision DV twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, approved by council on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Administration received a development permit application to build a new single detached home at seventy-three oh-six Township Road, four-eighty-five A. The property is zoned S dash ERB, which is Special Urban Reserve District, where single detached dwellings, new buildings, is a discretionary use. Discretionary uses must be decided by town council acting as the Municipal Planning Commission per Land Use Bylaw Section one-point-one-three-C. A decision on this application may be made today depending upon the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public, advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley's bylaw twenty eighteen zero seven A, which is our electronic advertising bylaw. This is to facilitate the public hearing process. Any comments received, either written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. I will now call for comments from administration.
Good morning again, your worship and fellow council members. Pertaining to today's public hearing regarding discretionary use development permit DV twenty-two dash zero four-six for a single detached house, new build, at seven-three-zero-six Township Road, four-eighty-five A. Administration has received no comments from the public back, neither in support nor opposition. Administration's comments will be delivered as part of the subsequent request for decision pertaining to this item. The applicant is in attendance should council wish to ask questions during decision item nine-point-three. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I will now call for comments from the floor. I'll call for any comments from anyone online. No comments online. I will now declare the public hearing closed at nine twenty-two AM. And that really is it for our public hearings. And I have spoken a lot this morning, and I feel my, my throat is already sore. We'll move into our delegations now. Our first, uh, up is seven-point-one, the Rise to Action Committee. We have Mr. Chase Combs here this morning. Welcome. If you want to come down, you're more than welcome to sit here or stand at the podium, whichever you feel more comfortable. We allow about ten minutes for each of our delegations. So good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Town Council, Mayor Dodds, for giving me an audience this morning. And please pay no attention to the myriad of dog hair I have on my shirt right now. My dog is definitely not shedding like crazy this fall. Um, I have a document to present to you this morning, um, which will be emailed to you as well later today. And also, um, hopefully sometime in November, we will be able to discuss it further at a RISE event that was previously scheduled, but now is being rescheduled due to, uh, conflicts in, uh, schedules and such. As many of you may know, I've been involved with RISE for basically the whole time it existed here in Drayton Valley, roughly six years. And, um, as such, I've created this document, um, as part of the Rise to Action Committee to present to you today, um, based on the many consultations that we've had with both local Drayton Valley youth as well as just like the general public. So I'm just going to read what, what I have here. Thank you. Project overview. What is RISE and who is the Rise to Action Committee? Resilient Youth in Stressed Environments: RISE is a five-year multinational research project to explore patterns of resilience among young people in changing environments. Research sites include communities involved in oil and gas production and communities impacted by climate change. This project is focused on Drayton Valley, Alberta, Canada, and Sekunda, South Africa. The Rise to Action Committee is a group of young people participating in the knowledge mobilization phase of the study. This advocacy document is intended to highlight issues raised by community members who participated in RISE and offer potential solutions to improve the resiliency of Drayton Valley. Our proposals have been agreed upon as a committee, and we believe their implementation would go a long way toward fostering a more robust community for young people today and into the future. Probably skip the timeline part. Our first advocacy ask: Green spaces. Thinking resilience to community nature and outdoor recreation. Quote, to quote someone in Drayton Valley who was interviewed as part of our project, "My favorite place is Discovery Park." A growing number of studies on conditions like depression, anxiety, and mood disorders affirm the, the positive effects of nature on mental health. Even living in a rural community like Drayton Valley can limit a youth's access to nature with socio-economically disadvantaged youth or young people facing the greatest barriers. Access to nature has been found to improve sleep and reduce stress, increase happiness, and reduce negative emotions, promote positive social interactions, and even help generate a sense of meaning. Green environments can improve people's ability to think, including by boosting memory, attention, and creativity. The Rise to, the Rise to Action Committee calls upon, um, the town of Drayton Valley to expand the number of green spaces within the town. The relatively newly constructed Discovery Park, which offers free public skating during the winter months, serves as a good example of local green initiatives. In addition to the neighboring skate park, it provides young people with a chance to spend in nature, spend time in nature, and engage in outdoor recreation, which can positively impact mental health and improve resiliency on an individual and community level. Our second advocacy ask: Housing. Stability and Resiliency. To quote again someone who was interviewed on part of a RISE project, "I see a lot of people moving into, uh, moving into, moving in together just for group housing or a lot of people simply dating just to have a home." Drayton Valley is a relatively high-income community due to, in part, the opportunities provided by the oil and gas sector. However, this creates challenges in increasing the cost of housing overall. In Canada, housing is considered affordable if it costs less than thirty percent of a household's income. While Drayton Valley might not face the same challenges as cities like Vancouver and Toronto, truly affordable housing can be difficult to find, even in Alberta. Stable, affordable housing can have positive effects on individual and community resilience. The Rise to Action Committee calls on the Town of Drayton Valley to expand its existing urban housing program by considering strategies such as Housing First, which is a homeless assistance approach, which, that prioritizes, uh, providing permanent housing to people experiencing homelessness, thus ending their homelessness and serving as a platform from which they can pursue personal goals and improve the quality of life. And Supportive Housing, which combines affordable housing with, uh, intensive coordinated services to help people struggling with chronic physical and mental health issues, maintain stable housing, and receive appropriate healthcare. Our third and final ask: Access to Services. A resilient community streamlines social services. Again, a quote from someone who was interviewed in our study. "Drayton Valley is missing mental health support." A reoccurring theme throughout the project has been that Drayton Valley youth feel like they either don't have or don't, uh, know how to access social services, particularly services related to mental health. Twenty percent of Drayton Valley's labor force works in oil and gas, mining, and quarrying, while only eleven percent in health and social services. Last year, Canada's Mental Health Index ranked Albertans' mental health lowest among all Canadians. The pandemic hit Alberta's youth particularly hard. In July of twenty twenty, only forty percent of youth aged fifteen through twenty-four reported excellent or very good mental health. Despite a decline in mental health among young people and Albertans generally, services have not increased to meet the higher demand. The Rise to Action Committee calls upon the, uh, Town of Drayton Valley to expand access to services within the community to better meet the needs of families and especially young people. These services could include mental health and addiction counseling, education, food, food banks, financial literacy courses, crisis support, legal aid, and youth support services. That is the end of my document. Thank you. Again, it will be, uh, emailed to you later today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. You might want to just stay there for a minute. We might have a lot of questions for you. We really appreciate you coming in today, and we appreciate the, the dedication and time that you've given to the RISE project and everything that you've done over the years. Uh, I've seen you in the community and being part of this, so thank you very much for that. Um, I will now open it up for any questions. Counselor McGee?
Well done. Well done. I'm, uh, I thought you did a great job. I've been waiting for this document for a considerable amount of time. And, uh, and I want to, uh, say that our, our time that we spent, uh, together in, uh, South Africa with, uh, our, our other team members, I, I think adds a great deal of value to your presentation this morning. Um, I'm thinking, uh, about housing. We, we have been having some conversations about housing and housing authorities and, um, and affordable and supportive, uh, housing. And so I think, um, we need... and supportive housing and so I think we now have a new premier that's talked about it. We now have the federal government really talking a lot about it so that I can see us getting down some road on that one. The green spaces, we can continue to work on. But I was thinking more about access to services. You know, that's, that's a mystery to me, but I think, would you suggest Chase that that would come through our FCSS and those kinds of services working together? Do you have any view on how we might be able to do that?
Yeah, thank you for your question and you know, I will say that it is good to be here today. I know you, Councilor McGee, were always someone who was asking like what are, like what, what do you want us to do as town council, you know? So I'm glad to finally be here today to prevent some possible options as to what can be done. But yeah, with regard to mental health services in particular, like I know like the rise to action committee, we are trying to raise awareness about the existing services. In terms of what can be done particularly by town council, I understand that like the options are limited. And I was going to add this before I started, but I also understand that like many of our asks again, which we can discuss further at a later date, will like require the town either partnering with the province or the federal government or whatever. But yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know, ask the new premier for, for mental health funding, I guess. I don't know, I don't know what else to say besides that.
I appreciate that because I think it's even difficult from our end of it, but I think Lola, you're with us and you know what the struggles are and time that you, we were able to access funding or go to look for funding, we attempt to do that. It's all in that guise of being better in this community. So that's, that's great. Thanks Chase.
Thank you.
So do you know if we've opened up the youth center or the youth hub that was kind of talked about for a while there?
As far as I know, that hasn't happened, but I could be wrong.
So it was open for a time. Okay, I did see it, the youth empowerment. So it was open for a short period and now it's closed due to staffing and such. Well, that's unfortunate. So maybe that's something that we can be advocating for to help support and get going again. Councilor Ballas, did you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you Chase for your past participation in, in the committee and presenting this report. Going forward Chase, where does the program go from here?
Thank you, Councilor Ballas, for your question. Yeah, so we were originally supposed to have it scheduled for November second, but like RISE and the people who've been participating in RISE wanted to have a community evening in which town council was invited to kind of speak about what the, what the future of this is because like the RISE, Resilient Youth in Stressed Environments research project is coming to an end, but we also don't want it to, to be framed as an end of the project so much as the beginning of like what the next action steps are. So our goal is to host a community evening in which we discuss what the actual next steps are and how to move forward with some of the knowledge that we've gained from, from actually doing the research project. So it was originally scheduled for November second. It's been, we're going to have to reschedule. The date has not been set yet, but we can't have it without, without your presence. So yeah, I'm just looking forward to that conversation. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
I have it a little later on the agenda for council items to, maybe we'll pick a couple of potential dates and then we can share those with Lola and, and hopefully something will work with Dr. Unger as well.
Right on.
Any other questions? No, well, thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate it and we'll talk to you very soon.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. So moving on, seven point two, what's up superfood has canceled this morning, so we'll be jumping to seven point three, our shelter pods program. That is Gian and Dean Davidson. Good morning. Welcome. You can either sit down or you can stand at the podium. Oh, you'll do wonderful.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity to express some concerns I have in our community. Good morning and again, as I'm nervous, but I feel this is really important that our community knows what's happening as a result of the location of the shelter pods. I'm Gian Davidson for those who do not know me. My husband Dean Davidson has owned the building for twenty-three years on the corner of Fifty-second Avenue and Fifty-three oh one, Fifty-fourth Street. We are kind of, we're very close to where the RCMP are and he's worked there very hard to make this a successful rental property with three offices and a residential space. This was part of his retirement plan. Dean's goal was to help new businesses have affordable rent, so to help them succeed with low overhead costs. One of the office rental spaces is a business that, that does massage therapy and life coaching. The shelters activities have disrupted this business greatly. The building shared a common fence with what has been for years the town works office, which is now the location of the shelter pod project. That has changed the dynamic of the neighborhood in a very negative way. From the beginning, this project, the shelter pods, did not consider the impact on the community of businesses and residential people whose lives would be affected by the location of, of the pod shelters. I understand the concept of the shelters to give a safe, secure space to the homeless for a night. There is much more to be considered. The users of this facility are not following the rules. They're arguing and resisting about moving their personal belongings every morning. And we know this because we see them and we hear them in our neighborhood. They never leave before ten o'clock ever. They verbally assault the housekeeping staff to the point that they need to have assistance to have the shelter user removed usually by a bylaw officer or the RCMP or sometimes a town employee. We have witnessed a homeless shelter user yelling at the cleaning staff many times, more than I can count. Sometimes the cleaning staff is locked in their vehicle during this angry yelling fit. When the businesses are open, we see some of the shelter users walking or riding bikes or scooters down the main center of that main street. I think it's Fifty-fourth. And they won't move, horns honking and obscenities being shouted at vehicle drivers who honk at them. A day doesn't go by without the word, pardon me, fuck being said loudly and repeated often to express something or someone that the homeless are annoyed with. One of the pod users was so angry with the vehicle driver, she was going down the street in the middle. She stood in the road and yelled fuck eight times as loud as she possibly could. We heard it from inside our building and came out to see what was going on. We have families with children in this area and the businesses who are hard workers and taxpayers and productive people. These outbursts are very disruptive. There's a huge problem of mental health issues. I so appreciated gentleman before me and I could relate totally to some of the things he talked about in our community in regard to mental health. We have forgotten them. There's a huge problem with the mental health issues among the homeless that is not being addressed in any way. They are pushed out every day and they start over again. It's like ripping off a Band-Aid with a wound that never gets to heal. I've expressed these concerns with a number of people connected to the project. I've had meetings, I've sent emails and a number of frustrating phone calls about the impact of the shelter pods and the daily concerns the users have created in our neighborhood. I usually get a, you should call the bylaw, bylaw officer in charge or build the fence so they stay off your property or call the RCMP, make a complaint. All of these sections, suggestions would normally be good suggestions, but this is a daily ongoing problem. There would be numerous calls nearly every day. People wandering around because they have nowhere to go, so they sit on the lawns and the curbs until someone needs to park their, like they actually sit, shock business there. I can't believe how many times he's had to get somebody off his curb so he can park his company vehicle. The shelter users during the day, they sleep or they can lean against something in the shade, they hide their personal belongings on the property of the businesses so they don't have to carry them around all day. Some of the men are urinating behind the pod shelters. They don't seem to care that they can be seen. There is a porta potty. I feel that the problem of having this kind of homeless shelter is never going away. People who use this facility change from day to day and they have to learn that there are rules to be followed. You can ban one disruptive person and it isn't long and you have another disruptive individual. It's like the movie Groundhog Day, only it's not funny. Unfortunately, this is the life they know. They are unhappy and frustrated with what their day is and have little or no guidance on how to do something productive with their day. There are mental health issues that are not being considered. This program is not equipped to financially or professionally address these concerns. If this project, if this is a project the town of Drayton Valley wants to continue with, they need to relocate the shelter pods to an area where the homeless are not impacting the residences and the businesses daily in such an overwhelming manner. I again, thank you for this opportunity. I wrote this down because I'm very passionate about this and I didn't want to get lost in all of the incidences that have happened. I do have a record of times and I have pictures. I can tell you how many times that I know of and I'm sure I don't know all of them, that the police have been there, that the fire department has been there. And this is a family community. I know that that trailer park is not what we had hoped it would be, any of us, but it is trying to survive. And you know, in the twenty-three years Dean has had that building, never once have the people from the trailer park damaged our property, stolen anything, interacted in a negative way with us. We see them taking their bottles to the bottle depot. Since July, I can't even tell you how many times we've had issues with the shelter pod users. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. I can give you some documentation in regard to times and what and when and who if you'd like.
Thank you very much. You did fantastic.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming in today. I'll open it up for questions. Councilor McGee?
Gian, nice to see you. The RCMP have been in, on numerous occasions to, to give their stats and their regular meetings with council. And I have a regular question that I ask is, is our population actually increased? And the answer generally is no, it has not increased. And in fact, what we have is people that were, were living marginally have, have now sort of, for lack of a better word, come out of the woodwork. And so do you have a sense of that? Have you noticed anything?
Mom, I have to agree with what you just said. I think because there has been a couple of locations where a number of people were housing without power and lights and what have you, there is an example right now in the trailer park, the number two, which is the trailer that has been boarded up. I know there was a lot of women in there, so they need somewhere to go now. I totally understand that. And I think that's another issue. We don't have a women's shelter. I think a lot of this comes to play about mental health. There is people in the pods who do what they're supposed to do and we've seen the one couple, they've probably been there three months, no issues whatsoever there, you know? But there is the ones that cause a ruckus and you hear them and it's daily. And my fear is, as I said, one is banned, that person after they've done their length of time that they're not to be there, they can come back. We don't, because it's a mental health issue, we don't know how long it is before that reoccurs or someone else. So those things are not being handled and that's what's so disruptive. They're to leave at nine o'clock, they could leave and then the businesses open, right? It wouldn't affect the businesses, but they don't leave till ten, ten-thirty, sometimes noon, sometimes they camp out in the RCMP under the trees. I called about that and it was supposedly handled. I didn't inquire anymore that day. I took a picture. I got a response to my call and they reassured me. The next day I went out and there was four people out there. There was only one the day before and now they're camped out. And two days ago, RCMP were out there moving somebody. So I, I know that they're doing what they can do, but if we let one of them move all their stuff in a corner or whatever, because they're, all they're learning is that's where I can put it for now, it's safe. I know their lives are very day to day, but we're not getting, giving them any guidance. We're giving them warmth, which is totally appreciated and a safe place to sleep, but nothing else is being handled. It's, it's, it's a serious mental health issue and, and the pods don't cover that. That's not what that was meant for, I'm sure. And that's what it's attracting.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming. I think that the, when we looked at the project, the project was exactly that shelter. We had a MAP program that was running, so it was a safe place to go that was seasonal. And we look at, we looked at expanding that just because we're not, or the homeless aren't always just trying to escape the elements of the cold also when it's gotten really hot the last couple of summers and things like that. We looked for a solution for emergency protection for overnight, so that's where the idea of the shelter pods came. Edson is running a similar program, so we did look at that and to see how it operates and things like that. And it is or supposed to be in place just for the overnight. And of course, yeah, we have been hearing that it's, that's not the case is that it's extending into the morning and, you know, different times of the day and things like that. And we have numerous organizations and individuals in the community that are working together to look at ways to support either addiction or the mental health of these individuals as well. That is a separate component. Like you said, this is, you know, supposed to be similar to the MAP program where you come, it's a safe place to stay. And a lot of times it is for the women that maybe before didn't have that safe place. Now they have that safe place with a locked door that they can go. I do think that, you know, there is a chance that council can have that, the, the discussion around if that's the right location for sure. You know, I know that the committee did go out and they kind of did a sweep through the businesses and residents prior to the pods coming just to say they're coming and this is kind of what's happening. And the consensus was that, yeah, yeah, but of course, once they've got here, you know, situations have changed and there's been elevated, you know, incidents and things like that. So I think opinions have changed a little bit. So I do know that Councilor Clark has brought this to the, the attention of a few of us and to our CAO as well. So I do believe that he's been in communication with you and, you know, we're, we're working on a solution or a location or something. We're not just kind of turning a blind eye and saying, you know, we appreciate you coming in today because it is important that we look after our residents and the businesses that surround and, you know, we want your businesses to be successful and we want, you know, our residents to feel safe too, right? But we also want to make sure that we have, you know, a place to, for our most vulnerable population to, to sleep at night and to have access to resources, right? But those are discussions that are ongoing and unfortunately they won't happen overnight. So I can assure you that, you know, we are working on something and that we do hear you today and we really do appreciate that you coming in.
Well, I appreciate the invitation. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Take care.
So we do have one more delegation, but they're on the schedule for ten fifteen today. So we're a little bit early. And we also, just to let you know, Graham, I know that you're from the paper, we will be breaking today at eleven o'clock for lunch as we have a meeting with Wild Rose School Division, just so you know, so a little bit early. So I think what we'll do is maybe what we'll do now is we'll call a five-minute break because I did tell the owners of Spirit Leaf that we would be jumping into our decision items. So that's what we're going to do is we're going to be jumping into the amending bylaw. So we'll call a five-minute break and then we'll jump back and we will start making our way through our decision items, starting with nine point one. Back, we will reconvene at ten oh one AM sharp and we'll jump right into our decision items, starting with nine point one, amending bylaw twenty twenty-two dash ten dash D, controlled substance separation space bylaw for second. Amending bylaw 2022-10-D Controlled Substance Separation Space Bylaw for second and third reading. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Worship and Fellow Council Members. As a continuation of the September 14th first reading of amending bylaw 2022-10-D for Controlled Substance Separation Space, Administration is presenting the bylaw for your consideration of second and third reading. A public hearing was held earlier today. Notification of the public hearing was conducted through the typical statutory requirements of two newspaper advertisements and posting on the town websites. An additional social media post from the town's official Facebook page was also made. Additionally, Administration directly notified via mail both the property owners and business owners of all existing cannabis and liquor store licenses of the hearing and will be notifying these parties regarding the final decision presented before you today. The Separation Distance Bylaw is a series of amendments to Land Use Bylaw 2020/12/D. It is intended to clarify separation requirements, mitigate adverse impacts, and overall aid both Administration and the public in recognizing what uses are present and where conflicts may emerge. The amending bylaw is one main component of a series of measures Administration is undertaking to address these issues. Administration has not updated bylaw 2022-10-D since first reading on September 14th. As a summary, under the text amendment, Administration proposes the following: that use categories be listed as separate lines and in a format mirroring how terms are identified throughout the land use bylaw; that retail cannabis and retail liquor are made to mirror each other in separated uses by including religious assembly to retail cannabis; that separation distances for cannabis processing be increased to 200 meters from 150 meters in order to lessen conflicts; that measurements be redefined to be taken from building footprint or commercial bay footprint instead of the property line; and that multiple definitions be added to the glossary as subclasses to further illustrate what operations fall within a given use category. Administration's recommendation is that council approve amending bylaw 2022-10-D for second and third reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Administration? Councilwoman McGee?
Well, I think what we had was a public hearing and we, the discussion is about distances. And we really didn't hear a conversation about distances. What we heard from one of our, two of our residents that it's, it's not about distances, it's about capping. It's about saying you have enough, right? So it's not, we know that we need to, to have this bylaw in place in order to have distances that look at. And, you know, we're also having now a variance or a decision on whether or not one can go build a daycare center across from the liquor store. So we're having that discussion today as well. So I find it interesting. And I'm not sure if I have a question. I, I just wanted to really let you know that this isn't about the discussion on capping our businesses. It's a discussion on distances is all. Would I be correct?
Yes, the scope of this bylaw is in about separation spaces in regards to caps. That is not something that Administration is addressing in this. If council wishes as a subsequent, we can follow up with the owners there to have further discussions on that item. But as is presented today, that is outside of the scope of what Administration is presenting to council.
Okay, thank you.
There would be, this is a text, the text amendments that are part of the bylaw, right? Would there be the opportunity to add a, let's just say, capping to an amendment during this time as well? Or would that be required for a separate meeting?
If council was to propose an amendment in regards to capping, Administration would be advising that, that not be decided by council today and that, that go for broader public inputs. We would prefer that it be re-notified to all residents prior to any decision being made so that we get broader public opinion on an actual capping place.
Thank you very much for that. So yeah, today's bylaw is in regards to the amendment of the text amendment that's within this bylaw. One of those amendments is the separation distance for cannabis processing to be increased to 200 meters from the 150 meters in order to lessen conflicts. The way that I look at this is, I've, I've been one of the counselors that have always opposed new or additional liquor stores and cannabis stores to come within the community. I'm all in support and favor of free enterprise, but I don't believe to the extent of business failure. And so I, I do look at something that, I don't think that capping is the way to go when it comes to businesses, saying that you can't have this type of business or we can only have this many. I look at it as using the separation distance for something like cannabis or liquor. And I look at it, I know that other municipalities have used it. Rather than saying, you know, we're capping it, they would say, there needs to be a distance, the distance that we've increased 200 meters today would be increased to, let's just say hypothetically, 300 or 400 meters. And then that way you would look at that in its sense, when you look at a community or a size and you say, any additional liquor or cannabis stores cannot be, unless they're grandfathered in, cannot be within 300 or 200 or X amount of meters from this liquor store. So then that way it just cuts it down a little bit more. Because when you look at the community our size and you say 300, 400 meters and you go, well, basically I can't put it anywhere because if you look from this store and go 300 meters, then that's a way to lessen it. And I think that's a lot of the time what municipalities do is they use that distance rather than to say you can't have. And I do support and say that, you know, we need to have more diversity. I think, you know, as a council, we need to look at economic development and diversifying our community, maybe looking at businesses our community doesn't have, and looking at ways that we can offer incentives or opportunities for residents in our community when they're looking at businesses, you know, encouraging them to say, why don't you open a hat store or a bookstore rather than a cannabis store? This is what our community needs, you know, we'll get behind you. So I think there's a, there's a bigger discussion, I think, that needs to happen. And as Jerick had said too, I think if we were to be looking at the capping, we would have to take it away from the table and that would be a separate conversation. I feel that today, that the 200 meters increase from the 150 is a step in the right direction. I think that it now provides for more space in between cannabis and liquor stores. Is it the right? I, I don't know, you know? I, I think there's seven of us around the table that, you know, need to, to look at that. But it's not to say that we can't be looking at that again or other ways that we can perhaps support, you know, residents and businesses like you as well. Any other questions? So what I'll be looking for is I'll be looking for a motion that supports the amendments to the text today that, that Jerick has proposed. The recommendation from Administration is to approve second reading. Before we can go to third reading, we will need to have a unanimous vote there. We've already had first reading. Today is second and third reading. Mr. Osmond?
Yeah, because first reading was received at a different date, unanimous consent motion is not required today.
Oh, so we don't? Okay.
No.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion from council. Councilwoman McGee?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion to approve second reading of bylaw 2022-10-D, recognizing that it's distances that we're talking about today, not the cap question. And there are no amendments to the, to the text. So we're just looking at the straight second reading.
Thank you for that. So Councilwoman McGee is making a motion that council approve the second reading of bylaw 2022-10-D. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Pam, did you capture that? Okay, perfect. So I will ask if there is any question, debate, or comment on the motion. Okay, I'll just say again that today is in regards to the amendments, to the text amendments for the categories. We're looking at things like the terms identified through the land use bylaw, the distances. We're adding religious assembly to the retail, the measurements to be defined, taking from the building footprint rather than the property line, and that also the definitions to be added to the glossary and subclasses to further illustrate what the operations fall within a given use category. And there will be an opportunity that we could potentially talk about what you had suggested this morning as well. So this is just what we're discussing today. And I will now call the vote. Motion is on the table. All in favor, that is carried. And I will ask a member of council to now make a motion for third reading. Councilor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council approve third reading of bylaw 2022-10-D.
Thank you very much. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion?
With that, Madam Mayor, the, as we head into third reading, I would ask Administration that if we are going to discuss, for instance, 500 meters or 1,000 meters to the next store or the next cannabis spot, that would come under a whole different bylaw. Am I correct in that?
So after this point, any future amendments would be under a new bylaw that would be presented before council. So if the option was for council to wish to proceed with increasing that distance further, then council, and then Administration would be taking that back and looking at drafting a subsequent bylaw to then present to council at a later date.
And one would expect that, that, again, a public hearing. And where I think the discussion needs to go, in my view, is to sit down with the owners of our cannabis stores and our liquor stores and have a really broad discussion about capping and, and the next steps. If, if we're going to go down that road, I would hope that we really communicate that well. And because I, I certainly understand the free enterprise piece. And my problem is, is picking winners and losers. That's where I, I find the most difficult thing is, is that we can grandfather, I get that, but picking winners and losers is not something that I feel really comfortable with. But it's a different bylaw altogether.
Ms. Osmond?
If I could, yeah. I, I think you're absolutely right, Councilwoman McGee. I think if we were to explore a second amending bylaw to look at any of those things, the, the key would be to get a broad consultation with all of the players. So certainly, current business owners are, are part of that conversation, as well as the community at large and, and other business owners. So that would be a key part to any of those decisions.
So that would be separate from today. So after today's meeting, we could look at setting, I guess, looking at redoing the bylaw or just amending again with the business?
So, so it would be an additional amendment for, yeah, essentially a, a new bylaw establishing a new set of regulations. And if council made a motion asking Administration to prepare a bylaw with these types of amendments, then we would begin the process. We'd get a draft, first reading in front of council, and then proceed with other consultation.
Okay. So would that be, need to be captured in a motion or at a planning meeting or a council meeting?
I, I would recommend a motion at council directing Administration to pursue the amendment to the bylaw.
Okay. So would you want that as a separate motion or would that be part of a third today if there was a consideration?
Procedurally, it should be separate.
Should be separate, okay.
Deal with third reading and then separately we can consider next directions.
Okay. Okay, so I will be asking a member of council for a motion on third reading of this bylaw. Oh, sorry, you did ask, I got lost there in that. Okay, so there is a third motion that council approved third reading of bylaw 2022-10-D. And I will ask, all in favor, that is carried. And then now, if we want to bring it back for discussion, then we need a motion for Administration to bring it back, further information.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anybody interested in making that type of motion that Councilwoman McGee had suggested? Okay, Council Clark?
I make the motion to direct Administration to further explore capping liquor stores and cannabis stores within the town limits.
Did that kind of? Yeah, I'll repeat it. Did that kind of capture, Lynn, do you need it to expound on that if we were to either look at other options, including separation?
I, I think it would be helpful if that was added to the motion, just that we would look at both items. But otherwise, I think the motion is sufficient.
Separation distances. I think you can just, you can just amend the wording.
Myself, okay.
To include.
I'll move that council direct Administration to look at capping as well as separation distances with respect to cannabis stores and liquor stores within Drayton Valley.
Okay, so Council Clark has made a motion that Administration look at and bring back, provide information to look at capping and separation distances between cannabis and liquor stores. Yep. Okay, and you got that? Perfect. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. Any discussion, comment, or debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. All opposed. That is carried. Okay, so Administration will be bringing us back information in regards and we'll have the opportunity to explore that. And then if there's an appetite to go further with this bylaw, then what would happen is there would be public consultation. So that would give an opportunity for liquor stores, retail, members of the public and businesses to have their say and input in this as well. So thank you very much for coming and listening today. We'll move on to 9.2 of our next decision item. Actually, I think that we have our, our other delegation here. Before I jump into that, we'll jump back to Frank Matic High School Leadership Trip Group, 7.4. Good morning and welcome. So you can come to the podium if you would like. Good morning. Thank you for coming. Welcome. Thank you for coming. So the floor is yours. So whenever you want to get started, go ahead. So the floor is yours, so whenever you want to get started, go ahead.
All right. So for me, it was not only one of the most fun trips I've been on, but it had a massive impact on me. It helped me gain more confidence as a leader and helped me find my voice. It showed me that if I don't stand up, nobody will. It made me realize I got to stop caring what others think about me. It also, also found out how important healthy relationships are in leadership. It helped me become a more confident and positive role model to those around me.
For me personally, it really brought out the empathy within me. I am very good. Like before, I would kind of stick to my opinion, but now I'm a lot better on seeing somebody else's side of the story and seeing what could have caused them to do what they did. And I, when we were down there, there was many people like Mrs. Bartling who took us, and they were just the greatest people, like people that I kind of idolize now. And it also showed me that with these Special Olympians that we worked with, they, they don't get opportunities like that very often, and it was probably the best thing for them ever, like Lane said. And it's just chances to create opportunities for others is just a big part of being a good person.
One of the main things I was able to take away from this conference was the ability to take the first leap towards my goals, whether it is something that frightens me or makes me uncomfortable. I learned to free myself from the judgment of others in order to be the person I want to be in life. I've learned to reach out and take risks necessary for my personal success as well as those around me. I hope to take these skills and implement them into my personal life as well as my community through leading by example and creating opportunities for myself as well as those around me. I believe that this conference has changed me into a person who is willing to step up and take charge for others when others are afraid to do so. I think I can speak for all of us when I say we are all lucky enough to meet and connect with some very influential people as well as some great new friends who all have different perspectives on life. This experience is one we will never forget.
Is there any questions?
Wow, what an amazing experience. Congratulations, all of you for going and that's amazing to overcome, you know, those fears and, you know, feelings of, that you've experienced and, you know, to be leaders in our community. We're very proud of you and we're very happy that you're here today sharing with us. So I will open it up for questions that anybody has. Counselor McGee?
I do have a couple of questions. Gentlemen, you're, got one year left in Frank Matic High School, correct? So in every, everyone that I think is wanting to move on to secondary education, I think you used a word that I, I'd forgotten what you'd said, but continuing on anyway, that's, so, and get that sense. The third question out of that is the, where are you in these photos? I should have read that, but I don't, I have no idea where you were. No, 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 you're, I'm guessing there was a pink flamingo, so you were where it's warm.
Oh, yes. We went to, I guess we did a couple of things outside the conference as well, but we went to Indianapolis Zoo as well as Indy Raceway and the NCAA Sports Hall of Fame.
Okay.
That's where most of the pictures are from.
Yeah.
Nice.
Perfect, Heather, nice.
Yeah, what a fantastic experience.
Yeah, good for you guys. Well done.
Yeah, so what are your plans now, like that you've done the leadership? Is there something else that Frank Matic is doing? Like, is there a club? Is there a program? How are you kind of still staying involved? And then, I guess, you know, spreading this so other students, you know, can find the courage? And are you being leaders within the school or what's your next steps?
I feel like us now can be role models to like grade nines, tenses, and elevens since we do have, I think, a pretty, a pretty big influence on them. It's the leading by example and I think we do want to kind of advertise it more. Advertise the, the sense of leadership more within the school.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. And then people, yeah, it gives them the courage too, right? You want to keep spreading that. Heather? Do you want to come to the mic? Just because we do have a few people online, so that way they're able to hear it as well.
I think one of the things these guys, well, they know, but they forgot because it's a long time ago, was why they got selected. So when we pick kids for this trip, we don't look at the kids who are already like shining bright in there and like already have all this stuff. We pick kids who this would have been horrifying for them before they left. Like, we see something in them and we see that they haven't quite seen it in themselves yet. And so we look for the kids who maybe, you know, we see that it's in you and if we take you to this, maybe it'll build your confidence a little bit so that now you can see that and take that into the future. And I would say, just even from teachers' perspectives and stuff, just how these boys act in our school, and not that they were bad before, they were just quiet. They were just kind of there, right? But now you're like, hey, we need people to do this. And they're like, we'll come, we're there. Hey, we need this, we'll come, we're there. And I remember when we debriefed the evening after the conference, we were like, well, here's some things we can do and like, we could do a unified event. And they're like, yeah, we'll be a part of that. Just let us know. And that's a spring thing. So they aren't there yet because we're, it's September and we're trying to keep our heads above water now. But that's the idea is that, hey, we're going to run this unified thing. And I know they're going to be the first three in my office saying, you know what, we saw what that did. And we have kids in our school that haven't had that chance to do that, so we'll help lead that. And we'll, and that's what I found in them. They probably haven't noticed because they just didn't know. They weren't that way before. They were just, you know, and now they're stepping up for anything we need to say, hey, we need some people to step up and lead the way and show. And we know when these guys step up, they're bringing people with them who are going to follow them and maybe get some of those experiences as well. Because now, well, now there's somebody who's taken the lead to take that step. So they don't, they're kids, they don't quite see that expansion side. But like for us as a school, we've seen that change in them from last year to this year in that they're not afraid to say, you know, I'll come and do that and I'll be a part of that. It's not just, I'm just with this group and kind of hampering that leadership side. So that's kind of why we pick those kids, certain types of kids, is we want them to grow that, have that growth so they can now become those citizens in the world, right? So.
That's amazing. Can you just, before you go away, can you just tell us, just because we have Graham here from the paper and a few people online, about the conference again and how kind of it all came to, like just briefly of what it was again? Because I think that was out of Canada or was it out of Alberta? How did they get picked or how did this?
So generally at the conference, I, when we pick the kids, I'm like, you have to recognize when you go down here, the kids who are coming from the States are representing their state. So these kids are representing Kentucky, these kids are representing Alabama, these kids, and they are on their state student councils or athletic councils, and they have to apply through their state and get selected. But because I was on the ASAA board years ago and I went down there to bring the Alberta Student Leadership Conference here. And so we actually run a province-wide one through the Alberta Schools Athletic Association that I had. And I met the guy down there and he's like, hey, you want to bring kids? And I'm like, yeah. So any school I'm at, we get to bring kids. And so we're really the only, like, my, I used to go with my friend who passed away during COVID, so he, his school is no longer taking kids. But we're the only Canadian school that goes down there right now and we just get to pick kids from our school because I go and I get to bring kids. So it's super fun.
That's pretty awesome.
But hopefully some more Alberta schools go down in the future, like we're trying to push to get a few more down because they, they like having the Canadian perspective. Like I said to the boys, I'm like, one of the coolest things, like if you look at this first one, I said, I don't know if anybody knows, but the only flags on that stage that Elliot puts up there, and Elliot's this big guy, he's got the Indianapolis flag, I don't even know if he has, was the American flag even up there? I think it was the Indianapolis flag, the Burton flag and the Canadian flag right behind him. I'm like, he just loves having kids from Canada there and it's, they're almost a novelty down there. Like, it's like, I think one of the greatest times was the dance where they had like, they have a dance in the evening on the last day and they have, they played Party in the USA and the boys are like, they just took us in the middle and they're laughing, singing Party in the USA to us, they're Canadians, right? So it's just a good experience for these kids. And we try to stay a day, go a day early and stay a day late so that they can actually experience Indianapolis. So we always say, hey, what, like this is probably my fifth trip down there. And I'm like, what do you guys want to see? Here's some options. Like we've done the Colt Stadium tour before, but it was shut down. We've done some other tours where we've gone to check out some sporting events. We've gone, we've driven to Cincinnati and watched a Cincinnati Reds game sometimes. We've watched the Indianapolis Indians play. They didn't play when we were down there, but we tried to make it so it also expands their view of the world as a little bit bigger than just Drayton Valley so that they get to see that, hey, there's these experiences out there. Come out, the world's not so scary. It's go and have a good time. And like my good friend from Alabama, we made a new friend from Missouri. We always go a day early and then our kids kind of become a group together and then, yeah, so. It's kind of a neat conference and thanks for supporting it. And if you'd support it in the future, that'd be really awesome too.
That's awesome, wonderful. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming today. And yeah, we're very proud of you. And go out there and continue being leaders in the community and being amazing and doing what you do. So yeah, what a great experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, take care. Good job. So we'll jump back into decision items, moving on to 9.2 discretionary use request at 5137 50th Avenue for development permit application DV 22-048. Jerick, this is you again.
Excuse me.
Ms. Rosman?
We have somebody in the gallery today for the next item, 9.3, the discretionary permit request for 7306 Township 485A. So Administration is wondering if we can swap those two items.
Sure.
Thank you.
So what we'll do is we'll, instead of 9.2, we'll jump to 9.3, which is discretionary use request at 7306 Township Road 485A for development permit application DV 22-046. So go ahead, Jerick.
Good morning, your worship and fellow council members. Administration received development permit application DV 22- oh, could we just swap out the?
Just, everybody's just taking a minute to find their, the right papers. What page is that in our? Okay.
Thank you. All right, so Administration has received development permit application DV 22-046 to allow for a new single detached house at 7306 Township Road 485A. The site was formerly part of the northwest corner of Southwest 3348, Seventh West to the Fifth, until it was subdivided out as per council resolution number 05522 on April 13, 2022. The property retained its S. Herb or Special Urban Reserve District zoning designation under which new home builds are considered as discretionary use and must be decided by council. A site visit was conducted on September 20 of 2022 and indicated that the site is currently sits as a field abutting a heavily wooded ravine embankment with a creek to the north. The property owner is seeking to place the new home on the southern half of the parcel towards the center of the clearing and oriented towards the Township Road 485A to the south. Under the municipal development plan review, the site contains part of and abuts a marked water course and ravine. Administration has a deferred caveat on the property for reclaiming a portion of the land as municipal reserve or environmental reserve once the area is subject to more intensive subdivision and development plans at a later date. In the meanwhile, municipal services, including water and sewage, do not reach this area. The applicant will be required to provide private connections and treatment in a manner that meets provincial permitting requirements and does not pose a contamination risk to the sensitive environmental area to the north. For generalized future land use, the MDP does not provide direction on the future intent of the parcel. It is Administration's view that a single detached home would not be inherently problematic or fundamentally, fundamentally limit future development potential for the site and surrounding area, provided that the provincial permitting requirements for the private water and sewage is met. Inter municipal development plan requirements stipulate circulation to the county when a discretionary use falls within 100 meters of the town boundary. The property was measured to be no less than approximately 355 meters from the boundary line. As such, Brazo County was not included in the notice or referral. The site is not currently subject to any area structure plan considerations. Administration views the proposal as suitable for the site. Administration does not see a risk posed by the development nor consider it a long-term planning hindrance should the property be allowed to function as a residence. Due to the, due to the remote nature of the site, fire services was included in the circulation of the proposal. Fire services declined to include any additional requirements to the development permit from the typical requirements for a fire safety plan, which is to be approved prior to commencing construction. Fire services did note, however, that additional fire prevention measures may be determined at the building permit stage should the development permit be approved. Pursuant to land use bylaw section 2.10, notice of the application and public hearing were mailed to surrounding landowners within 100 meters of the property lines on September 22 and a notice was posted on the town website. No notices were received back and stated as such during the public hearing held earlier today. It is Administration's recommendation that council approve development permit DV 22-046. A draft permit is provided as attachment eight to your council report. If approved, the applicant may begin pursuing a building permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Administration? Counselor McGee?
Just one quick one. I was trying to figure out access, but it looks to me like access to the property would come down if you were heading out to Vada Grove and then you, you go back to the east and then back into the north. It seems that's a distance from town, but it's, it's really not. But I'm guessing that's the access and you wouldn't be able to get access off the highway into that property. Am I correct in that?
No, not direct. It's the road, the range road that it's closest to is slated to eventually become an extension of 50th Street, but that is not built out yet and isn't planned to be anytime soon. So currently you have to go through the highway down, then you have to take another township road all the way loop around, go back up slightly and then continue on the Township Road 485A where it's expected that the access to the site will be off of Township Road 485A.
Yep.
So the driveway and approach will be off of 485A, is that what she said?
The planned orientation is that the driveway and approach will come off of Township Road 485A and so it has been addressed as such.
Okay, could I just request, I really appreciate the maps and the detail and everything else that you've done. Could I just request that in the future that you maybe mark the roads and the highways so we know when we're looking at this, which are the highways and where the roads are and stuff? I was having a little bit of difficulty figuring out where I was and what road and that. So I'm just trying to think on that one, where would you say the driveway and the approach would be then? Okay, so 45, so you're going down. Okay. Thank you for that. And then just, I guess I just had one other, I guess, request or question in regards to the plot plan from precision and part of the conditions when it talks about the sewer and things like that. I, maybe just could we request like the radius from dis, for discharge when it comes to the pump out? That's the only thing like I was just wondering about, the adjacent lot, right? It doesn't show it, it shows it in the plot plan of just that the pump out, but it doesn't show the discharge radius. And so my concern would be because it is close to the property line, is that, that it would be discharged on the adjacent or is that the road there?
My understanding from the plan that was submitted is that the pump out was planned to go from behind the house immediately due north and so it should be central to the parcel and not off to any one of the sides that would affect the neighboring property. The closest concern that may come up is how close it would be to the ravine area, but that would be something that would be reviewed by provincial permitting.
Okay, so it will be reviewed. Yeah, because I wasn't noticing it on the plot plan and I know that if you could maybe just a future ask for them to have it on there to show the radius because that might be an issue if it is close to the ravine as well, right? I just seen you had it as a condition, so that might be maybe just an amendment or an addition to that perhaps?
It's something that we can look for in the future. The applicant did provide a rough sketch as part of the attachment three to the report as the third hand drawn image there to indicate that the plan for the pump out was to be north of the property.
Yeah, I, I see that, but I was just wondering of the radius discharge, right? And typically if you don't see it, then it could go over the property line. I think that was my only concern there, right? And especially if that is a ravine, that would be the only thing for me. Any other questions? Pardon me? Um, no, I don't. Did you want to, I'm, we have the, the landlord here. Is there anything? And how far from the property line, the discharge? From the pump out still? Okay, okay. Gotcha. Thank you for that. Okay, any other questions? No, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Council Evans?
I'll make the motion that council approved development permit DV 22-046 with conditions as presented. Is that good or do you want as attached?
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Council Evans. There is a motion on the table. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? No, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for coming in and congratulations and happy building. We'll circle back around, back to 9.2 discretionary use request at 5137 50th Avenue for development permit application DV 22-048. And everything's good, Pam? You're good with everything? Our wonderful Sabina is on maternity leave, so we have Pam, new assistant, executive assistant. That is.
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant. That is going to be with us, so.
All right, well, good morning, your worship and fellow council members. Again, this is potentially the last time you'll be hearing from me today. So administration has received development permit application DV 22-048 to allow for a change of use to operate a care facility child at 1 or 5137 50th Avenue. The property is zoned C-gen or commercial general district where care facility child is listed as discretionary use and must be decided by council. The site currently sits as a vacant commercial structure paved on three sides, abuts a single detached homestyle structure to the west and neighbors a church to the east. Past uses of the site include funeral services and beauty salons. At administration's request, the property owner conducted a phase one environmental site assessment, which concluded that while minor amounts of chemicals were previously stored on site related to the funeral service use, they appear to be handled appropriately and pose no apparent, apparent risk of contamination for future occupants to the site. The site sits in relative close proximity to an existing liquor store. Under the regulations adopted by the passing of bylaw 2022-10-D earlier today, the liquor store is approximately 83 meters away from the site, measured from building footprint to building footprint. The land use bylaw includes restrictions where liquor stores are not to be permitted within 150 meter of childcare facilities. However, as the liquor store serves as a pre-existing use, should the care facility be approved, the liquor store would be allowed to continue operation with the limits applying to subsequent liquor stores and cannabis businesses at this location in what is considered a grandfathering out of the conflicting use. The liquor store is already subject to the grandfathering environment as it also sits within 150 meters of a religious assembly in a school reserve parcel. Adding childcare facility to this list would not materially impact the site in a manner differing from how it is currently affected. Regarding a conflict between the liquor store and proposed childcare facility, it is administration's view that the users of the childcare facility will either drive to the site, dropping off and picking up directly from the premises, or may walk or bike where they predominantly stay to the south side of 50th Avenue in this area and thus would not conflict with the operations of, or users of the liquor store on the other side of the street. Under MDP review, the MDP directs that the site be of commercial or light industrial nature in its operation. Administration views a private childcare facility to be considered as a commercial operation and would consider the proposed use in adherence to the MDP. The site is not subject to any area structure plan considerations. Pursuant to land use bylaw section 2.10, notice of the application and public hearing were mailed to surrounding landowners within 100 meters of the property lines on September 22nd and a notice was published on the town website. No notices were received back and stated as such during the public hearing held earlier today. It is administration's recommendation that council approve the change of use development permit to allow for a care facility child operation. Administration has heard from various departments and the public that childcare spaces are in need in this town and does not see allowing the use on the site as imposing any novel form of risk that would need to override this consideration. Fire and community services were included in the circulation of the application and declined to request any additional conditions on the development permit beyond the standard requirements, but noted that subsequent to a development permit being issued, all relevant building and provincial regulations would still need to be met in order to operate from the premises. If approved, the applicant is expected to conduct tenant improvements on site. Approval from the province would still be required as a subsequent step to the development permits to operate from the facility. A draft permit is provided as attachment six to your council report and is presented for your consideration and decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Council Ballas?
Thank you. In their application, you're looking at approximately how many staff and in regards to staff numbers, parking?
When it comes to the actual application for change of use, that is not something that typically gets looked at, at the development permit stage. However, when we were provided a rough detail for the plan itself, they were indicating that they were looking at approximately 30 to 40 children with staff at around five to eight staff members on there. But that is not something that is up for development permit consideration at this stage.
So that, that comes in when they make application for a license?
For the actual licensing, the land use bylaw only dictates the use and the specification where it does have is whether or not it's considered a childcare facility, which is greater than seven children, or if it is a home operated business, which would be less than seven children as per provincial licensing. So that is the closest that administration has the capacity to make a development permit application based on the proposal for student, for children on site. That is not something that we would be looking at active, we would make it a consideration to see, does the site look like it would have the capacity for that? But it is not something that is directly contingent on the, the land use bylaw requirements. For the traffic flow and traffic impact, there are also provincial regulations that under the Traffic Safety Act that they may need to meet as well.
Council McGee?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that council approve development permit DV 22-048 with the recommended conditions presented. So it's under attachment six.
Okay, perfect. So you have made a motion. Council McGee has made a motion. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? I just had a question in regards to when you talked about the liquor store being grandfathered in the adjacent properties. Is it provincial regulation for 100 meter distance to be between a childcare facility and liquor or cannabis?
So the province makes a differentiation between cannabis and liquor stores. It does not have separation requirements for liquor stores and for cannabis stores. It talks about school reserve parcels and healthcare facilities. So for a childcare facility, that would actually be something that the town imposes above and beyond provincial requirements.
Okay, so the liquor is on there, but cannabis is. Okay. Thank you very much for that. So there is a motion on the table. There is no other further comment, question or debate. I will then call all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, so our next lunch meeting is here. So I think before I jump into 9.4, we are going to break for lunch. We're breaking for an early lunch today as we have a meeting with Wild Rose, Wild Rose School Division. And we will reconvene at 12 o'clock. Rob, does that? Yep, about 12 o'clock then. So if you want to come back at 12, that would be great if you'll be typing. Well, thank. We'll be breaking now. Decision items. We are at 9.4, October 12th, 2022 council meeting, manufactured home amending bylaw 22-08D for second and third reading. Go ahead, Ken.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. You may recall, first reading was given to this bylaw on July 20th. There were some changes or amendments made at that time and brought to the September 14th council meeting for the, where the public hearing identified that the manufactured park owners had some interests that they wanted incorporated. And upon hearing their input, council tabled the bylaw on the 14th to enable administration to address these interests. So that we consulted the park owners again and brought forward basically three changes to the bylaw for today to continue on with the process of second and third reading. The first change was that the requirement for the age of a new manufactured home be removed as the existing development and building permit process ensures that at minimum any used manufactured home is required to be updated to satisfy the safety elements of the 2007 Alberta Building Code. The second adjustment, and these are all noted on page 120 of your agenda package in the red boxes, that the road maintenance regulation be reworded to meet the requirements to allow emergency vehicles to access the property. And another, and a note was also added that park owners would be fined if a manufactured home is moved on site prior to acquiring these permits. These changes were vetted with the, the park owners again and they had no comments. So I'm bringing forward with the support of council and park owners that recommendation is that council gives second and third readings to bylaw 2022-08D as amended.
Your worship, I would make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2208D as amended.
Oh, my mic is not on. Well, thank you very much. We're just jumping right into it. Thank you. Any comment, questions or debate on the motion? Council Ballas?
Just one quick question. When you mentioned fine, do we have to specify in here an amount or does that go into a difference?
No, this is also already accommodated in our land use bylaw. The first fine would be double the permit fees.
Thank you for that. So with the new changes, initially I was satisfied with the initial changes to these, this bylaw when it came to the 15 years as designated on the CSA label from the 25 year date. I think that my concern was that a manufactured homeowner would go out and purchase this home and then they would bring it on to the, the park, the parks owner's lot and then it wouldn't pass the, or wouldn't adhere to the CSA approval or the 20, 2007 building codes. So I think that's what I was worried about is then that person would be out with that money and then what would happen? But I think that, you know, by assuring that we're asking the manufactured home park owners now to make sure that they're providing development permits, building inspections and ongoing or, and things like that permits to us prior to the moving and purchase of the manufactured home. I think that this will mitigate that problem. There was also something that we discussed about yearly stats or yearly dwellings like that the park owners are supposed to be providing us with. Where is that captured in here? Mr. Rosman?
Yeah, so that happened as a discussion about some of the other pieces around restrictions on designated manufactured home parks in the MGA. So there are examples of communities that have set up bylaws to put a little more teeth on the requirements of the MGA. So there is a reporting requirement for park owners to provide certain sets of information on a regular basis to municipalities. In some municipalities where that information isn't always delivered on schedule, on time, they've developed bylaws to help ensure that that's the case. It doesn't form part of this bylaw, but if council was interested, we could pursue looking at that here. But I think one of the questions we'd have to, to ascertain is, are we getting the information on a regular predictable basis?
I thought that that was something that we had. I was, under the understanding as something different. And we feel confident that by now having the, the ability to fine in place and that we will have, ensure that the manufactured home owner will be protected, I guess, not be out the money in the pocket if it doesn't pass building codes inspections and.
Your worship, I think the, the intent of the bylaw is to put the information that is needed and the steps that are needed right in the regulation. And so people know what's needed on both sides and also at the town. So to address your latter question, we can certainly, you know, we can, we can ask for this information and if, you know, I, I see no reason why they wouldn't submit it. So I, at this point, unless we have to force them to submit it, I don't see a need to do a bylaw to do that, so.
Yeah, I don't see a need to do that either. I was just wondering how you're going to be able to see that they are obtaining the correct permits, right? And I think with that measure in place, that would probably help. So if you're just reaching out and asking for that reporting requirement, then that would give you a better understanding of any new units that are going in the parks, I think. Were there any other questions, comments?
One quick one. The question I asked about a new one going in, down in West Park, was that, is that in fact, well looked at and licensed and?
Counselor McGee, I knew you were going to ask me that question. We haven't had a chance to go out and look, but we'll, if they, they, they don't have the permits, we will get them.
Perfect, thank you. And for number three, the changes to that as well, to be removed as a permitted and discretionary, that's out of all of the zoning uses except for the manufactured home parks themselves, right?
And no, it's still retained, it's still retained in the, of a small residential district. So you can still put in there.
So small residential, give me an example of where that would be.
It's a large area that's on the east side of the downtown area. It's around the, if you remember the United Church in that area, there were smaller, smaller residential parcels. So that's the.
Is that where it's called? What's it called down behind? What's it called down behind the coach motel? Is that where?
It's, it's a large area, worship, that's still, I'm just looking.
So, I thought, I was under the understanding that we were taking them out of all.
Yeah, we can't do that directly. We can look at that in a, in the future because if you remember, our West Park area there is not a, it's not a manufactured home park. It's, it's just a development.
Zone different, and that's behind the motel.
S R small.
S R small.
So, that's the reason why we're keeping.
Okay.
At this point.
At this point, so until that is.
They're permitted in that district, I believe.
So, would that not be considered grandfathered, though? Or, I guess.
It could, it could be.
It could be grandfathered, but then if there was one that went out, then another one to come in.
Yeah.
That would be the only area unless that area was rezoned, something different, right? Manufactured home area or something?
So, manufactured, manufactured homes would be permitted in the small residential parcel district, and that was to accommodate that grouping of manufactured homes.
So, they're permitted or discretionary?
Permitted.
Permitted, so on, say, Forty-fourth Street, if one goes out, then one can go in?
Yeah.
I think that's what the, my understanding was that's kind of where we were trying to get away from that, right? So, is there a way that we could?
Well, we can, we can look at a strategy to deal with that area of development. And so, we've got to separate that grouping of fifty or sixty of them just to the west and then the remainder of that district. So, that's our issue.
So, is there a way that number three, just thinking, because it's not, where is it captured in here that that would be where? I guess it wouldn't be in here because it's permitted, right?
Yeah.
So, there'd have to be a way that it would be captured in number three, even to be discretionary in small residential, perhaps?
Council could consider making it, moving it from permitted to discretionary. Then again, that would affect that area. They'd have to come, any manufactured homes in that area would have to come to council for approval as a discretionary use.
So, any replacement, so if there was one that was removed or something happened to it, then it would have to come to council? So, if there was an appetite to include that in number three, then there would have to be an amendment done to number three, correct?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Any other comments, questions? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Okay, moving on to nine point five, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two municipal, oh, sorry, that was for second reading. Now, we'll go on to third reading. Is there a member of council that would like to make third reading?
Your worship, I would give, make a motion that council give third reading to bylaw twenty-two oh eight D as amended.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion for third reading? None, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Now, we are done and we have three readings. And we'll move on to nine point five, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, MDP Terms of Reference. And this is you again, Ken.
Okay, well, your worship and council, and this is, this is, the MDP is kind of one of the more prestigious planning documents that a municipality can undertake. You as a council will have this opportunity to be involved in a municipal development plan review. The MGA kind of recommends every ten years an MDP be reviewed. And so, since our last, or our existing MDP was adopted in two twelve, we're, we're pretty much more on the ten-year point to review an MDP. The MGA also requires, there's about nine things that require, has to be done by bylaw, has to look to the future of land uses, it has to describe the manner form and density of these land uses, it has to coordinate future land uses with transportation and municipal infrastructure, it has to ensure compatibility with the subdivision development regulations, it has to provide for municipal and school reserves, it has to protect agricultural operations, it has to be consistent with any intermunicipal, any municipal development plan, and it must address, and it could address any other matters relating to the physical, economic, or social development of the municipality. Administration has prepared this Terms of Reference for, for the MDP. It's, it's a project that generally has four main phases, which basically has background research, the input of ideas, the, or the creation of alternatives, and then the evaluation of alternatives, and then finally the draft document preparation. So, we're starting some of the background studies right now. These will be, these are listed on page one, sure, I don't have the right, somewhere in the, in the report, they're listed on page five of the, of the Terms of Reference itself, and it just reviews population, demographics, affordable housing, downtown revitalization, fire response, communication engagement, land facilities, and the building audit. So, these projects we're undertaking right now, and the bulk of the, the actual MDP process will start in January. Most of the work will be done in-house. There'll be some specialized resources required. It's an opportunity for council, for the community, for administration, for the businesses, for everyone in the community to reflect and use our imagination and, and creativity to come up with ideas and policy to, to guide the town into the next decade. One action, well, I've got two action items for you in the report. The first is that the advisory committee needs a couple of members from council to participate. And also, I'd like a motion to approve the Terms of Reference. So, with that, I'll ask council if they have any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Counselor McGee?
Prestigious is an interesting word, and you use it because there's no other opportunity that we get to, to look inside and, and do this creative plan. Is that what I've heard?
Well, I think, through Counselor McGee, I think it's one document that it doesn't focus on the literal or rational side of, of thinking. It also wants to call in the creative side and imaginative side. Most of, if you know, if you know most, I think I've done a couple of NDPs now called Imagine twenty, twenty or something, and, you know, it's all about imagining and, and thinking about the future. So, this is a document, you get to do that.
It's a fun and exciting document. Okay, looking, we're looking for two separate motions here, one for Terms of Reference and one for the appointment of two members of council to sit on the advisory committee. Counselor McGee?
I'll make a motion, council approves the Terms of Reference for the MDP.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None, I see a few shaking heads, but okay, I'm going to take that as no comment, question, or debate. And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And we need two members of council to sit on this. I would love to sit on the board, just so if anyone knows. No, no. Counselor Sheriffs? Or you would like to as well?
I'd like to sit on that board.
Else? Anyone would like to? There's three of us that would like to. Counselor Ballas, do you have a question? Because this isn't, this is a statutory plan, and this is a requirement that we have to do, so it's different from organizational committees. Ms. Rosman?
Also, the, this committee is temporary in nature, and so, we're just looking to assign.
Do you need to, do you need to have the names? Or we just?
At some point.
Okay, would you like to say the names of the three? Thank you very much for that. Are there, are there any comment, question, or debate? Counselor Ballas is asking who? Counselor McGee had made a recommendation or abain a motion that council appoint three members of council to sit on the MDP's advisory committee, Counselor Sheriffs, Counselor Clark, and Mayor Dodds. Okay, any comment, question, or debate? I'll ask all in favor. Just right up there, thank you very much. What's that? I don't know, it's a little bit different. Would there be an ex officio? I don't know.
In the Terms of Reference, it doesn't outline an ex officio, but we'll, I think probably the best thing to do is assume based on that motion that council is amending the Terms of Reference to have three counselors on the, on the panel.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Yes, I guess that's what we're doing. Okay, and moving along, nine point six. Shelley's not here, so Mr. Osman, you will be presenting the amended snow removal policy.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, unfortunately Shelley wasn't able to join us today. She's doing ICS training. And so, what you have before you is a policy amendment to the snow removal policy. When it was reviewed earlier this year, there was a portion that I believe council may have already, or in a previous version of the policy, removed, which was snow removal in front of private businesses and properties in the downtown core. So, it had been practice of the municipality to have the municipal services remove that snow and ice from sidewalks in those areas. However, there is a capacity issue when we come into the winter time. So, the amendment to the policy removes that. If council does pass this amendment to the policy, we'll begin a communication piece with those property owners so that they understand the changes that we're making here. The capacity that becomes available will be redirected to other priorities within the snow removal policy. In particular, first up to be addressed is our municipal properties and services. So, in the, in the previous years, we've had staff would begin snow removal at the Omniplex and then move their way east across town, but that meant that some of our other facilities like the ECDC and Park Valley Pool weren't addressed until after they're open in the morning, and creates an operational problem for us. So, that will be the, the primary redirection of those services will be to focus on the, making sure that our municipal properties are cleared before business open. And then also, because it is park staff that typically do this snow removal on sidewalks, they will also be able to augment their winter parks and recreation services. So, that's what we're looking to do with the change here today.
Perfect, thank you very much. Are there any questions for administration?
Just, you talked about consultation with the downtown business folks. I, I came up this morning and it's, the sidewalks are covered in leaves, right? Which is, could be seen as fairly cool, but, or it could be seen as, Jesus, isn't anybody looking after their businesses? You know, Amy, it's two ways to look at it, and I, I think the, and so, all I would say is that we just want to be really clear that this is not going to happen, and you are responsible, and don't be phoning us to say, why haven't you come? And if we get pushback, then, then I don't know if we'll reconsider it, but I, I do think the, that, you know, central core somehow, it's pretty important. And not to every business, because every other business looks after themselves, but I'm just a little concerned that we're, that, that we're taking it out of the picture and I, yeah, and I, I can just see the next steps coming, but.
Yeah, I, I would echo your concern. I think that it is kind of the heart of the community, the downtown, you know, definitely, but I, I do think that the onus falls on the, the store owners. I guess the question would be for me is, let's say winter comes and it's not being, you know, taken care of, do we reconsider it again, or do we just find them and say, not our problem?
So, that's a good question, and I, and I forgot to mention when I was originally speaking through the item, currently in all other areas of the town, residential and commercial, the individual property owners are responsible for snow and ice removal on their sidewalks. And so, this is essentially making the downtown core have the same responsibility over those assets as, as we do in other parts of the community. So, in other commercial areas in town, when snow removal doesn't happen on a public sidewalk, there is an enforcement process. So, recognizing that this will be a change, we'll develop an enforcement strategy. So, in addition to the public communication, we'll likely progress through a couple of additional steps to make sure that people have the opportunity to respond to the, to the new process in the downtown core.
So, maybe this is more of a Ken question, but would there be, I guess, an opportunity to kind of turn downtown or maybe even extend it a little bit of an area into a BIA or a biz or something that you can incorporate a levy where maybe we do look at, you know, snow removal, you know, and maybe we also do extra beautification there and, you know, extra promotion, or there's something to really highlight and attract to this area? And with, how long would it take to kind of incorporate that or get that going?
Your worship, yes, that's a process that could be undertaken to deal with various services and improvements in the downtown area. Generally, it would, it would take a little bit of time because you'd want to engage the downtown community because they would be the ones footing the bill. So, you'd probably need at least maybe two or three months to, to do that properly.
So, we could go ahead, since snow is, winter is coming, we could go ahead with the policy today and then maybe, you know, look a little bit deeper into whether we could be incorporating that. And then, I know years ago, you know, I had brought it up, but I know a lot of the businesses downtown were vacant, where now they're filling up, so maybe there would be an appetite to go out there and say, you know, hey, do we want this to be our core? Do we want to drive? Do we want to have more events? Do we want to really beautify and really, you know, make the downtown like they do in cities, right? Stand out and even name that downtown or something, right? And have that discussion with, I don't know how council feels, have that discussion with, you know, the businesses down there, and it's incorporated through levies, right?
In the community that were levied to get lower streetlights and, and flowers and everything, and the city levied us and we paid it the extra tax to have all that done, and so, it was actually, it's remarkable what, what actually can be done if you just focus on one. And then, of course, the next obvious steps are, as others say, you know, what about me?
And then other areas, you can incorporate them too, and it's really an economic driver, right? As all of a sudden it starts to be because you're focusing on that, so you're highlighting that area and you're looking at ways that you can drive the traffic and, and make it in exactly like that. So, then maybe the Dotson Plaza area, you know, sees and says, well, hey, I want to be, you know, part of this biz or BIA as well. So, then you can have different areas throughout your community that you have this, and it's very good for your community, right? The return on it, so, I don't know, maybe that'll come out of, you know, strategic planning and, or economic development as well for a conversation. Just food for thought. Okay, so with that up, I don't know if there's any other questions, comment, or debate, but we need a motion on the policy here today. Counselor Evans?
I'll make the motion that counsel accepts the repeal and replacement of snow removal policy T dash zero one dash twenty-two with snow removal policy T dash zero two dash twenty-two as presented.
Thank you very much for that. There's a motion on the table. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? None? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving along, 9.7, Cody. Enforcement Services Satisfaction and Priority Survey for 2022 Results. Good afternoon. Attorney Counsel?
You'd see me in a cast or two if I was doing that. So back on June 8th, counsel may recall, I was here at a GMP meeting to introduce a Satisfaction and Priority Survey that Enforcement Services wanted to do within the community. So on June, between June 14th to July 3rd, we conducted the survey in the community. We advertised it on our website, on social media accounts, town facilities, and we dropped off a bunch of surveys at the 55-plus Recreation Center. Through that, we were able to get 168 responses. Of the responses, 13 of them were paper copies, the rest of them were electronic. There were 13 questions that were asked as part of that. I don't know if we need to go into the full. Oh, there we go. So when we get into it, first question was just what statement describes you most appropriately? So do you live in Drayton Valley? Do you work in Drayton Valley? Those kind of questions. So through that, 76% of respondents live in Drayton Valley. The next highest was 10%, which was I work in Drayton Valley, but I don't live in Drayton Valley. We didn't have anyone that was kind of outside, not associated with the community that conducted the survey. So we kind of got a good, good response of people in the community with their concerns and what their priorities were. So through that, the majority of respondents have either lived, worked, or been involved in Drayton Valley for over 16 years. So the respondents were definitely people that have been long-term in the community. They've established their roots in the community and they're proud to call Drayton Valley home. So when we asked if you're aware of what Drayton Valley Enforcement Services currently does, about 85% of respondents said yes, and the remaining said no. With that, there's going to be a little bit more I'll talk about later on about some possible avenues that we can kind of do for some education on that one. But this is kind of when we start getting into the meat and potatoes of it. So overall, how satisfied are you with Drayton Valley Enforcement Services direction in the last three years? So this is when we kind of start finding out where, where the community gauges Enforcement Services back in June slash July when they conducted this. So at the time, we had approximately 55% of respondents that were satisfied, but that leaves us with about 45% of people that weren't satisfied with the direction of the department in the last three years. Next question is, in the last three years, have you been in contact with an Enforcement Services employee? If you responded yes, then you got to answer the next couple of questions. If you responded no, then you kind of got skipped to the following. But through that, about 60% said yes, they have. So the following questions that came up with that was thinking with your, of your contact with Enforcement Services in the last three years, how satisfied were you with the customer service that you received? So this is when we start looking, quick look at the graph, oh, we got lots satisfied, but if you actually start doing the math, we've only got about 43% of people that were happy with the customer service that they received in the last three years. So that leaves us about, I don't know, my math is off here. I had a bunch of skips, so that might have been why, but that still leaves us with about 45% of people that weren't happy with the, the services that was provided to them. So that's definitely something for administration, we need to look at what was going on, how can we change this and how can we improve going forward to increase the service levels and increase the customer service that we're providing to, for clients. Next question is, thinking about your last contact in the last three years, how satisfied were you with the staff providing a response within a reasonable amount of time? Again, this one, pretty positive. Overall, it was about 63% of people that were satisfied and remaining not too happy. But definitely, again, something that we can look at on how can we kind of get back to people a little bit quicker? How can we provide additional information so they're not kind of just sitting, hanging kind of thing with the previous or recent policy that was brought in regarding customer service? That definitely, again, kind of puts us a little bit more on track on timelines, on having to get back to people and stuff like that. Again, thinking about the last contact in the last three years, how satisfied were you with staff doing everything necessary to assist your needs? This one, we didn't do too well at, at all. Lots in the dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. So again, looking internally on what can we do to increase the satisfaction for our clients? How can we help them? How can we make sure they're aware of what we're doing? Different things like that, right? And how can we do more outreach with the community? Question nine was, we asked the top five answers for what the respondents believe the priority should be for Enforcement Services over the next five years. So kind of just starting at the top, 57% stated unsightly properties, 36% were animals at large, 15% were teaching point pause proceed to elementary schools, 16% for positive tickets, 42% for traffic violations, and it kind of just keeps on going on all the priorities that people wanted. I guess a couple, couple comments on this. Interesting communities I've worked at in the past, there's a lot of publics wants for a lot of the community engagement type stuff. So you're, you're in the schools, you're doing presentations, you're doing bike rodeos, different stuff like that. But when we look at the responses at the survey, it's actually kind of opposite in Drayton Valley. Why, I don't know. Definitely something I'm interested to kind of figure out why there's that kind of, there's a lot more wish for enforcement versus kind of the going out, hanging, hanging at the skateboard parks, doing stuff like that. So I'm definitely big on the, the community engagement and being out with the community and stuff like that. So I don't know if it's just kind of a, one of those pieces where as time goes on, as the community kind of sees we're, we're out there a little bit more and different things that we can do, if, if that will kind of change. But definitely something that when we're looking at the, kind of departmental business plans and stuff like that, how is this all going to fall in? So if we kind of go, keep going, on this slide here, I kind of combined the top three themes for what the top priorities were from the respondents. So if you kind of combine in your traffic related stuff, so traffic enforcement, commercial vehicle enforcement, enforcement of traffic by law related stuff, we have 123 responses as priority. Next thing would be unsightly properties and structures in disrepair at 116. And then lastly, for animals at large and animal protection at 108. So that was, that would kind of be, again, if we took those themes and what's, what's the priorities of the respondents, that would be what they're wishing. If we were to look at the 2021, 2022 RCMP Policing Priorities Survey, which included a couple of questions on community peace officers. In 2021, traffic enforcement was respondents' second or fourth highest priority. And in 2022, traffic was respondents' top of four priorities. So kind of consistent on that, at least on at least the last three surveys conducted in the community relating to this kind of stuff, traffic enforcement is definitely a priority for respondents. Next question, kind of really caught me off surprise, actually. So it was understanding that Enforcement Services is tax-supported, which of the following would you most likely support? So we had 50.69% of respondents say maintain current enforcement levels, 41% say increase, and 7% said decrease. So kind of with the current defund the police kind of movement that's kind of been going around, I was actually quite expecting it to be kind of the reverse on about 7% say increase and 42% say decrease. So I'm pleasantly surprised that this is the response that, that we were able to get from the participants, so. Going on, just a, would you be interested in conducting further surveys in regards to Drayton Valley Enforcement Services? About 65% said yes. And then the next two kind of questions that we asked were the open text fill-in, tell me your story on what you think. It's not a A, B, or C, it's open text comments. So went through the comments and tried to kind of pick out the themes that were located throughout the comments as best as possible. So kind of just some of those, traffic concerns, unsightly properties, homelessness, drugs, theft, more enforcement, staff don't do their jobs, speeding, trespassing, supporting our youth, concerns at night, more staffing needs, lack of enforcement, barking dogs, a lot of vehicles. So if we look at kind of, earlier I mentioned, do people know what Enforcement Services currently does in the community? Said I'd talk a little bit more on that. So for example, we have drugs and theft on here. That's definitely outside of the scope of the community peace officer's role, right? So does that a little bit more education to the public kind of help on stuff like that, right? So, but definitely, again, gives us some, some good insights when we start looking at business plans and stuff on where, where do people, what people think the issue is that's facing Enforcement Services? And then the next question, similar responses, but some different. But do you have any final comments or suggestions for Enforcement Services, such as how to improve or any additional priorities? So again, speeding, people stealing, more visibility, transparency, dogs off leash, more presence, snow removal, homelessness, more staff, poor driving, more visible in school zones, acknowledging complaints, unsightly properties. So again, some of that goes back to the customer service stuff, such as the acknowledging complaints, right? So when someone calls to make a complaint, we're actually following up with them and they're not just, we made a complaint and we don't ever hear anything back, right? So kind of just closing that loop with, with the public kind of thing. So kind of in summary, for the most part, people are aware of Enforcement Services and what we do, but some education regarding criminal codes, and that's a police matter, might be warranted. Respondents would support a change in the department's direction. Again, it was about a 45 to 55% split on like it versus don't like it. So what can we kind of tweak to improve going forward? Respondents would like more customer service than previously provided. The response to calls were completed in a reasonable amount of time, but we could do more to assist the individual needs. Traffic enforcement, unsightly properties, and animal concerns are top priorities for Enforcement Services. And respondents would either support maintaining or increasing Enforcement Services levels. So from here, we're going to kind of be looking at creating departmental business plans on kind of how, how do we move from here kind of thing? Going to be sharing the information with the RCMP, just kind of for their awareness, again, on what, what the community's concerns are. Going to provide additional information to the public on, again, just closing that loop on, hey, a couple of months ago, you conducted these surveys, here's kind of the responses from that. And then lastly is just exploring the possibility of doing similar surveys annually to kind of continue to gauge the public's perception of the department and trying to align with their priorities so that we know kind of where should we be steering our ship kind of thing, so. Questions on that?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Cody? Counsel McGee?
It's interesting, when you, you went over to 55 plus and of course handed them out and they're keen and been a long time here, and it would, would have been that, that one question that never did get asked, are you over 65? Or 55, maybe 55 plus? And the reason I say that is because that's where you might have seen the, the highest response, because we're not be getting young people interested in surveys and things like that, right? But we may be getting that response from, directly from the 55-plus crowd, which is wonderful. But we could be missing a block, don't we?
Yeah, it was definitely, when we were kind of preparing some of these questions, working with communications on kind of what information do we want to kind of get? One of the things that I kind of brought up is lots of these surveys, your first 20 questions is who you are, tell me everything about you, and then you get into the actual questions, right? So by the time you get to the actual questions, you're already done with the survey. So we were kind of weighing the pros and cons on whether or not we should include it, but definitely going forward, if we are going to continue doing this kind of annually or whatever, something that we would continue to look at is what kind of questions do we want to ask to be able, and is the demographics and stuff included in there, so?
I know, every hotel you visit now wants you to rate them and do all of that, and people are fatigued anyway, I think, in those questions. So 168 responses was reasonable, you felt?
Looking at the responses for the last couple of years with the RCMP Priorities Surveys, very close in numbers to that. So ultimately, I'd like more the better because then we, we actually have a better idea of kind of what more the community wants. But for the first time, kind of doing a survey like this, I think it was a good, good response, so.
And were you able to see how many of the surveys came back through social media and then others through the 55 plus? Like, was there a number to maybe kind of see?
Kind of the only stats we have is of the 168, 13 of them were done on paper copies and the rest were done electronically. So not sure of the demographics, how many saw a paper copy and decided to do it online or just did it on a paper copy?
It's good, it's good food for thought because then you kind of know that they weren't all targeted at the 55 plus. So there was a bit of, I would say, younger opinions in there perhaps, right? Yeah. Any other questions? Counsel Clark?
Yeah, I guess a couple of things to remember here, too. We had in the past, probably the past five years, so people differentiating between three and five years is probably negligible, but we had photo radar here, which was fairly contentious, right? So people's views on CPOs might be a little bit skewed as a result of that. And then as well, we did have a gap in terms of having a full-time CPO, right? So the visibility probably wasn't there. So these are all factored in there, I would assume, in the responses, but I mean, I like to see that, you know, nine out of 10 people think that it's either remain or, or increase. So I think that's positive, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think the results from the survey were great. I think that we are definitely a community that likes rules, clearly, right? And we like enforcement, which is a good thing because I think this council committed to enforcement, right? When it comes to our community standards and what we want it to look like and, and kind of beautification and things like that. So thank you for the great job in doing this. And I think that I need a counselor to make a motion to accept this as information. Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that counsel accepts this as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? All in favor? That is carried. And we're moving on to 9.8, Travis permitting. And this is you again. We really don't really know what this is about, so we're excited to learn about Travis.
Something new. So Travis permit, permitting, it's been around in the province for quite a while. It's new to Drayton Valley in a sense, but it's really not. So what is Travis? Travis is transportation routing and vehicle information systems. It's now called online service system, but Travis is a lot easier, so that's what I'm calling it. It manages access to various programs and documents issued by Alberta Transportation. It's used by carriers, the public, and law enforcement for various permits, inspections, and collision data. And it's used to resolve inconsistencies and inefficiencies in the rules governing the movement of oversized transportation across municipal boundaries. So prior to kind of a provincial program being implemented, it was always up to kind of municipalities to do all of their own permits. So if you were traveling from here down through Brazos County and to Tascón County, you got to get permits from each municipality that has different rules, different stuff like that. So when they introduced Travis, it was kind of part of that was to try and streamline all that process for, again, the public, the commercial carriers, and law enforcement. And then lastly, it's to standardize the conditions for movement of oversized permits. So again, if you're moving from one, one municipality to the next, for the most part, it should be pretty standard on what you're allowed and not allowed to do. So through Travis, there's 12 different types of permits that can be issued. So just a couple of them, advanced rig move permits, municipal single trip overweight or over dimension permits, single trip overweight for hauling licensed equipment permits, and load adjustment permits amongst others. So lots of, it's all commercial vehicle related permits that people are able to obtain through the Travis system. So why are permits needed? So provincial legislation has been created to place restrictions on commercial carriers and what they can and can't do. And a permit is, allows for the carrier to essentially not comply with that specific part of the, the legislation, and now they have to comply with permits. So kind of gives them, if So kind of gives them, if they're planning on hauling an overload load and legislation only says they're allowed to carry sixty-three thousand kilograms. Now, through this permit, they're allowed to carry seventy thousand kilograms, for example. So just allows for exemptions from the legislation, but still following the rules that are set forth. Permit sets let the road authority, so in this case, Drayton Valley, know what is occurring on the roadway. So again, letting you know through this permit processing process, you're going to have a bunch of oversized vehicles that are coming through town on the on the truck routes kind of thing. So that way we can start kind of looking at, is this going to be damaging our roads? If so, can we use any of this information to kind of work with public works and start planning? If eighty percent of commercial vehicles use this road, can they start doing some kind of long-term planning on, we know this road is going to be beat up quicker than the rest of them, so what can we do to prevent it? Kind of thing like that. If there's any road bans that are in place, we can put them on Travis and kind of again, reduce the the vehicles that are being approved to travel on there. So if we look at kind of the last five years in Drayton Valley for Travis permits, twenty eighteen, there's just over nineteen hundred, twenty nineteen, there was just shy of twenty-two hundred permits. Twenty twenty, it dropped down to fifteen hundred permits, twenty twenty-one moved up to fifteen sixty-eight. And as of September thirtieth of this year, we are at one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight permits. So high number. Some municipalities, you're only seeing a dozen a year. We're definitely seeing a lot more than a dozen. So from an administrative perspective, these permits historically, for the most part, have been dealt through with municipal services. However, it's recently kind of shifted to fall under enforcement services kind of deal with kind of thing. So through that, historically, again, a lot of the permits were having to go in manually be be approved or denied. I've spent some time on Travis, kind of getting different rules in place and stuff to allow essentially, as long as you're following the rules that are put in place on what we would allow or deny anyways, then the permit gets automatically approved. So now from an administrative perspect- perspective, there's a lot less time that we're actually involved. So I'm looking at probably five of these permits a month that I actually have to go in and physically approve or deny. Where before it was probably five a week, if not more. So definitely just by adding the the rules in and kind of making it a little bit better, definitely decreased the amount of administrative time involved in dealing with that. So as of January first to September thirtieth, I'm a look at some of the permits that were issued for Drayton Valley. There were three hundred and fifty-six municipal single trips for overweight, just over thirteen hundred for a single trip overweight or over dimensionals, six for drilling rigs, seventy-four for hauling licensed equipment and nine for empty equipment. So kind of gives us a snapshot of kind of what's going on. For example, we've only got nine drilling rigs that are that went went on town town roads in the year. So telling me they're kind of, either staying staying on roads, not in the town, or they're just not getting permits, which unfortunately that wouldn't be good. But that would kind of be an enforcement aspect on dealing with if they were doing that. But again, this kind of just gives a little bit of a snapshot on the commercial vehicle traffic that we that we are experiencing within Drayton Valley on the local roadways. So with that being said, through all the permits, I took a kind of jurisdictional scan of other municipalities on what they were doing. So Travis permits, they allow for municipalities to charge for the permits. You can charge nothing or you can charge whatever you want. There is no capping on legislation on what what your maximum is. However, when I did a jurisdictional scan of these, I believe it's fourteen different, well, thirteen other locations, the average permit was twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. No one uses cents. So twenty-five dollars of twenty is kind of kind of your average, what most places are using. Drayton Valley, though, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, we do not charge for any of these Travis permits. So with that, part of the recommendation is administration is recommending that we move towards a permit or a fee that we do start charging for these permits. So I've included a couple of different breakdowns of kind of what what some revenues could be from that. So there's kind of two avenues. One, we can continue to use the program or deal with the program in-house. Or there's a way where we can essentially enter into contracts with external providers and they will do all the permitting work for us. So if we were to do a twenty-dollar fee in-house, taking the numbers from twenty twenty-one, at twenty dollars approval, we could be looking at thirty-one thousand dollars in revenue. Plus, you have some weight and distance averages of about thirty-four hundred. So we could be looking at at the twenty twenty-one numbers at a twenty-dollar fee in-house, just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue that we could be seeing from these permits. If we move that to an external management program, they all charge their contract fees of sixteen dollars per permit. So that thirty-four-ish would go down to about ten thousand. So just kind of gives gives an example of different different ways we can do it and the costs associated with. If we move up to a twenty-five-dollar fee, dealing with it in-house, using the twenty twenty-one numbers, we could be looking at approximately forty-two thousand dollars in revenue. Or if we move it to a contract, again, that would go down to about seventeen thousand dollars. So with that, again, a big part of this is why do municipalities charge fees? Again, it's it's up to each municipality on where they want to kind of distribute distribute the money that comes from it. So at this point, it's kind of how do we proceed is let's, I think we need to determine if a fee should be imposed. If it is, then we should look at having it included into the twenty twenty-three fee schedule and then subsequent subsequent years with that. Determine if the programs can be managed in-house or externally, keeping in mind that if we do go externally, we'll have to enter into different contracts with the service providers for it. And then if we are going to be charging a fee, then we need to complete the paperwork with the government of Alberta, just to ensure that they're actually sending us the the revenues that are coming from it and the funding is provided quarterly. And then lastly is determining the appropriate use of the revenue from the permits. So kind of a couple of revenue options. Again, one could go into the general reserves and then administration can use it as they fit. Another option is directing it towards public work so it can be used on infrastructure repairs, potholes, different stuff like that. It is overweight vehicles that are damaging damaging the roads kind of thing. So can thirty to forty thousand dollars do much on pothole repairs? I'm not sure. Don't know, but that is an option for it. Or lastly, another kind of recommended option is create a community safety fund. Through that community safety fund, this could be used to fund various safety initiatives such as positive ticketing program, enhanced crosswalk lights, funding for a transportation master plan, volunteer speed watch, different stuff like that. So it's kind of a little bit, it's very, it's not common to see that in other municipalities. Lots of times it's either directed into kind of your general reserves or towards public works, towards road maintenance. But another option is can we do more increased safety with with the money that we're possibly able to obtain through that? So through that, my suggestion to proceed would be to look at imposing a twenty-dollar fee in the twenty twenty-three fee schedule. We would be managing the program in-house with the understanding that if there's parameter changes that come come to be with the program and all of a sudden it's now going to be a lot more administrative to deal with, then we might have to contract that out. Then lastly, direct the revenues to a community safety fund, which would be managed by protective services. So questions, comments, concerns on that?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counsel Evans?
So would you say that the majority of municipalities manage this in-house or farm it out?
I don't have exact numbers. I would probably suggest a good chunk of it's probably about a sixty forty from out passing numbers.
That farm it out?
That farm it out.
Yeah.
The remainder deal with it in-house. So.
I would agree with that. What do you think the cost is or would be for us to manage that ourselves? I mean, we can, we can make the thirty thousand dollars, but there's a cost associated with that, right?
Yeah, so currently, because I did go in on the backend and do a lot of the playing with the rules to get it, so it's going to automatically approve as long as they they fall within the guidelines kind of thing. At this point, like I said, I'm looking at maybe going in five permits a month to actually deal with. So as long as parameters don't change drastically kind of thing, my salary for about an hour or two a month is all it would take at this point to continue to deal with it in-house. But again, I want to make sure that there is that understanding that should parameters change, that could be blown out drastically, but.
Counsel McGee?
It's interesting you used a term approve or deny. And you now have it electronically, as long as you fit all the bills, you're approved, right? Have we ever denied any?
There are times where people get denied. An example, just recently I've been working on, they've applied probably four or five times. The program doesn't allow me to change their route. And they they're making their route off of the truck route and there's no need for them to go where they're going. It's an easy right-hand turn and they're out of town. But for some reason, when they're actually using one of the service providers, the contracted service providers, when they're putting it in, they're mapping it some odd way, so it gets denied. And then put in my comments on why it's denied and then it pops back up next day and we want to go the same way again, right? So I just had a conversation with service provider yesterday on what's going on kind of thing. So they are fixing that. So it does happen. Again, if there's, for example, if we know that we're going to be closing down a part of the road for an extended amount of time, I can go in there and I can put in rules to say, do not allow any permits to be issued on this road from this day to this day because it's going to be closed down. So now all of a sudden, we don't have an overload or something coming through town and all of a sudden they have nowhere to go because the road is closed. So we have abilities to kind of do stuff like that. It's very, it's very rare that a permit is denied. For the most part, carriers know what they what they need to do kind of thing and they are complying, so.
I had a few years back had somebody phone and say, why don't you find somebody to provide a service? And I think that's what you mean by a service contractor. That when we phone from a duke or somewhere, we give some times and it all funnels down, that we provide whoever that is, you know, takes the lights, makes the move. And because we know that the truck route out to Cynthia is is the preferred way for wide loads and big loads. And so why don't we provide that? And I thought, I don't know why some entrepreneur wouldn't say, yes, I'm the guy, right? Do you know if we have anything like that? Is that what you mean by a service contractor?
Yeah, so the the contractor is more of a kind of the administrative end. So it's it's kind of twofold. They they do work for both the industry as well as municipalities. So from the industry's perspective, Bodie Struckin calls up and says, I want to take my oversized load from Drayton Valley to Edson. I need permits. So they ask you all your questions. They'll sit there, they'll enter everything on the computer. And then the permits go to the municipalities and the province on, depending on the roadway that you're going. And then if, depending if the municipality is contracted with that same provider or a different provider or the municipality is dealing with it in-house, then it's up to the municipality to go in and look and approve it. So it's the administrative side of it. It's not so much going out and moving the lights kind of thing. But this is all that process that's involved on before you can move the lights, you need your proper permits in place to do all that kind of stuff.
And does the county provide any of these services?
It's my understanding the county does do Travis permitting. I believe it's in-house, but I could be wrong on that one. It's not in-house?
Okay, great. Another good report. Thank you.
Mr. Rothman?
I just had a couple of comments. I did want to bring to council's attention that in the alternatives, there is also the alternative of leaving that revenue in the operations. We know that most of the municipalities' individual functions are not profit generating and they're tax funded. So there is an opportunity to choose to leave that revenue in the function to reduce the the tax requirement for that particular department. I also wanted to suggest that if council was to make the decision today to proceed with implementing a permit fee, that the decision about whether or not it be contracted could be considered through the budget and to give us some additional time to evaluate what our options are in terms of contractors and things like that. And finally, I just wanted to suggest that if council was considering making a motion following the recommendation, I would just ask that the the last line be amended to be placed in a community safety fund for protective services priorities rather than administered by protective services. So just the the clarification being that the intention of that fund is that those funds be made available to protective services priorities. But as with all of our funds, it's ultimately council that will make the decision about when it's spent. So just for the clarity, if if that's the direction council to choose, if we could have that small wording adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Just a question. Would there be an option for the funds to go into the half percent sustainable tax levy as well for infrastructure projects future?
They certainly could. So in in general, council has the ability to decide where to allocate any of their funds. So if they saw the the net proceeds of this initiative as being appropriate to help augment that capital sustainability level levy, that's certainly a decision that could be made there.
Any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counsel for sheriffs? It's on the third page of the.
I'll make a motion that the council accepts the reports as information and that the council directs administration to include a Travis permit fee in the twenty twenty-three fee schedule for the amount of twenty dollars per permit and that council direct revenues from Travis permit to be placed in a community safety fund to be administered. Is that the one?
Yep.
My recommendation would be for protective service priorities.
Okay. To be placed in the protective service priorities. Is that right? Okay, that's it?
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel Sheriffs, there's a motion on the table. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Counsel McGee?
You don't anticipate any pushback?
It's permits, fees for permits are quite common throughout Alberta. So this wouldn't be something that's all of a sudden new to Drayton Valley that all of a sudden people have never never had to pay for a permit before. So and quite honestly, the the industry that is going to be having to pay for this, it's just going to continue pass pass on the fees to the users.
And this doesn't address any of the trucks that are currently down in our truck parking lot in the south end of town? Because they they normally, they're not overload or wide loads or?
As long as they're not falling in the criteria that needs permits, then they'd be fine.
Counsel Clark, did you have questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I'd like to see closer to the average. We have twenty-four sixty-three, I think was the average. I'd like to see twenty-five instead of twenty. And I would also like to see it consistent with Nancy's comment around the alpha percentage.
Sustainability levy fund to go towards. So are you suggesting a friendly amendment to Monica?
So I'd like the friendly amendment to read twenty-five dollars instead of twenty. And then I would also like to see that earmarked instead of protective services to I guess it'd be infrastructure roadways.
It's the it's the half, so to go towards the point five percent sustainable tax levy. That was the one that we created.
Last year.
Last year, yeah. So it's up to Counsel Sheriffs whether she would. Do you accept the friendly emotion amendment?
I'll accept it.
You'll accept it? Okay, so Counsel Clark made the amendment to twenty-five dollars and the permit Travis permits to be placed in the point five percent sustainable tax levy. Oh, go ahead, sure.
In addition to the levy instead of included in there. So we're still collecting the half percent as well as the proceeds from this. as well as the proceeds from this.
So it'll be $20 plus additional 5% sustainable tax levy tan? Tax? Yes, okay.
Okay, can you say that again? I don't.
So I'd like to see $25 instead of 20.
Yeah.
I would like to see uh the proceeds go into the how or in addition to the half a percentage. So we're collecting the half a percentage as well as this in that fund.
Okay, so the proceeds of the $25 um per permit as well as an additional 0.5%?
No, in addition to.
In addition.
Ready half a percent we're collecting, yeah. So add the two together.
Okay, in addition to. Were you able to capture that? No, can you?
Sorry, if I could, I might, I might be able to help that there is a reserve associated with that 0.5. So it's the capital infrastructure fund.
Yeah.
So it rather, if you just referred to the capital infrastructure fi- or capital infrastructure reserve, then it will go to the right place and it's not confused them with the levy.
Okay, so let's just um
So.
That the ladies have it.
Can you word that, Rob?
Uh, so I think that it's the proceeds from the program uh be put to the capital infrastructure reserve.
Reserve, not fund?
Reserve.
Reserve, okay. Okay, so there's a friendly amendment by Counselor Clark to Counselor Sheriffs. And Pam and Bree, did you get it? Okay, okay. Um, so it's up to you whether you'll accept.
I'll accept it. Do you want me to read the whole thing all over again once Bree and Pam have it written out or?
We'll have.
Colin, do you want to go ahead and do it?
Do we want to let them read it to see if they captured it maybe? Sure. Pam or Bree, do you want to read it?
We could do that? No, no.
It would be amended. Her motion was that council accept the report as information, which will stay the same, and that council direct administration to instruct to include a Travis permit fee in the 2023 fee schedule for the amount of $20, where Colin is amending it to 25 per permit. So that would be the amendment there. And then it would stay the same and that council direct revenues from Travis permits to be placed.
Capital infrastructure fund?
Do I need to say in addition, though?
No, if if you make the motion that they be placed in the capital infrastructure reserve.
Okay.
All of the proceeds go into the reserve and it won't affect the levy at all.
So that would be the two changes would be the 20 would be the amendment to the 25 and to be placed in rather than the community safety fund to be administered by protective or for. That was Monica's. The friendly amendment is to be placed in the capital infrastructure reserve.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, and Counselor Sheriffs is accepting the friendly amendment. Um, and because there was an amendment, and I have comment question on the amended, or do I go straight to the vote?
Uh, because it was accepted as a friendly amendment, you can proceed to debate.
Okay, so then I will ask now from council if there's any comment, question, or debate on the amended motion. Counselor Evans, sure, go ahead.
So Cody, the vast majority of them are um are taken care of automatically through your, through the program that you've you've worked on there and you only have two or three a month that are tricky that you need to address personally, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that straight. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So there's a motion on the table and I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, and I think before we move to 9.9, I'm going to call a quick five-minute break just for everybody to regroup and do what they need to do. Go through 9.9, the CAO bylaw. Mr. Osmond, this is you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, before you this afternoon, I have a revised CAO bylaw. Uh, the current CAO bylaw uh was passed uh by council in 2009. Uh, however, when reviewing the bylaw, you can see that the bones of the the piece of legislation date back significantly further. Um, so with the most recent amendments, the MGA in 2019, um, there's quite a legislative gap now between our current bylaw and the legislation. Uh, so we sat down and tackled uh producing a new bylaw. Um, I don't have a line-by-line comparison because the difference between the two bylaws is is so significant. But uh I thought it would uh hit off some of the highlights for council. So we do have um uh reference here to the fact that the uh the position is uh chief administrative officer, uh although we have retained the previous um ability to identify the role as town manager. Um, inside, uh, it speaks to all of the powers and duties, the vast majority of which are provided um and outlined in the MGA. However, there are a couple of uh new components within. Um, one specifically speaks to the the powers of the CAO as including the ability to move um money within budgets. Um, assuming that all of the objectives of council can be met um and that there's additional funds available that they can be moved around within. Um, so an example of this might be um if we, for example, in the um the hydrant function of utility services, um, we had money um to do a hydrant flushing program. We were able to successfully do that. There was money left over and we needed additional repairs to valves. Um, we, I could then have the authority to remove that. Uh, if there is a contingency in here that any of those types of changes would be reported back to council uh in a timely manner. Uh, there are also um some authorities that allow the uh CAO authority to settle uh claims against the town. Uh, that value in this draft of the bylaws uh been set at $25,000. Uh, and then we can review if that's sufficient or uh not at a later date. Uh, the vast majority of the document uh remains the same. Um, and I think the 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 last piece of significant change is the addition of a code of conduct. So the code of conduct outlines the uh expected uh behaviors of the CAO as an employee of council. Um, I don't know that the expectations would have changed between the versions of the bylaw. Um, but in the previous bylaw, it simply wasn't outlined. So uh if there's any specific questions, we can certainly dive into them. Um, but essentially what we're looking to do is update the bylaw to reflect current legislation and better ensure that it captures council's expectations of the CAO.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor McGee?
Just uh one, uh, and it's about the um code of conduct. Um, in C, it says serve all members of council impartially and provide no special privilege to any individual member. I would say that that your relationship with the with the mayor is is going to be completely different and I don't know if it should be noted as that, uh, but it's different and it has to be different because of the leadership that you provide and the mayor provides. I don't know, or we leave it just as that. I'm I'm fine with two, but it just struck me.
Sorry, Tom, where are you?
It's under code of conduct and that's C.
Okay.
It's page seven of the bylaw, page 207 of your package. Um, so my thought there is that um there is a legislative difference um between the members of council and council. Um, so it is important um that the CAO uh recognizes that there is a responsibility to serve council as a whole. Um, and that um I do in in the things that I do for council, they do need to be fair and open. So the MGA talks uh now specifically about providing um all information to all of council. And so uh there is, I think we can acknowledge that um although there might be times where initial communications would happen with the mayor, ultimately that information has to be shared with all of council. Um, so I think that the wording here reflects that at the end of the day, um, all of council needs to be treated uh as a member of the council unit. Um, and I think that's understood.
Okay, Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. In D, where it says establish organizational structures within the town. Is there a way, Rob, that perhaps it should be in consultation with the council? Shouldn't council have some say in how they want to see the organizational structure?
Uh, so in general, the structure of the organization is can is considered one of the tools on how I manage the operations of the organization. Now, council does exercise some control over that in that um I can't approve an organizational structure that isn't funded. Um, but the CAO does need the operational latitude uh to determine the structure that's going to achieve those goals of council. And so determining the structure is typically the CAO. Um, but then uh supporting it with a budget is the decision of council. So for example, I can't decide to create a new department new to the organization and not changing any other part without council's consent and budget authority.
Yeah, I I understand that part. My concern would be the organizational structure where you have a GM, a manager, a manager, and another manager.
Correct. So that portion is is the piece that would be considered operational, that in order for me to manage the operations of the organization, I need to be able to structure the operations so that I'm able to deliver on that responsibility to council. If I don't have the authority to set the organizational structure of council, that impairs impedes my ability to meet the operational demands of the municipality.
What were you thinking, Bill? Were you thinking the wording to be a little bit different? You maybe tell us a little bit more what you're thinking?
I just have a feeling that council should have some say in the direction and how you want your organization structured in consultation, of course, with your CEO. But I think council should have some input. Now, I'm I'm not sure how others feel, but you know, uh for example, if if you have community service, do we need three managers? And you may have the budget for you because you've got, you can move the money around wherever you want. But we don't want to be AHS and be management-heavy and grounds on or boots-on-the-ground light. And I'm I'm just saying, does council have any input in into that structure?
So in the MGA, what it outlines is that the the role of council is one of governance and the role of CAO uh is one of operations and administration. And so I I think my view would be that if I am able to obtain the goals and priorities outlined by council, being able to use tools such as organizational structure is very important to that. And so I I think I think to me, it's it's important that that operational component stay within the authority of the CAO. Uh, because if I don't determine the structure, um, then I it it becomes an impediment to me reaching the the goals as outlined. Now, if if council, council's ultimate authority is that I am their employee, so if I'm not meeting those goals, um, then there's an uh the need to have a conversation about how we we meet those priorities. But the the design of the internal operation of the organization is is a role of the CAO.
It is a role, but I I believe that MGA also states that council can have some input in it in in the structure of it. But I think that's a council's decision. And I don't know how others feel uh in regards to this.
It it does state that? Does it state that in the MGA? That can have or will, or how does it? Do you know the exact?
Yeah, so um I I'm not sure that I I could put my finger on that section because I think my my interpretation of the it's right at the front of the act where they outline the role of council and the role of CAO. Yeah, so.
So under powers and duties, the CAO is the administrative head of the town and shall deestablish establish organizational structures within the town. I'm just trying to think if there's anything you could add or change. Uh, sorry, Counselor Evans, go ahead.
I guess in my opinion, where where do you, how 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 deep do 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 we go into the organization? Yes, you've suggested that we don't want to get top-heavy like AHS, and I I agree with that. I think everybody would. But what positions do you want to have input in? And how far down that structure do we do we s- get involved in? Uh, I guess is the bottom line. And for me, uh, I would, I would be satisfied with with what's here, uh, just because it starts to get um pretty murky and complicated if if Rob wants to make a move. But if it's a certain position or a certain level or any level, he's got a, he's got to come to us before he makes that structural change. Uh, and 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 I'm not sure if you wanted that uh structured uh uh um, you know, a a process there to do that. But i- in my mind, uh, I agree with Rob that that he's in charge of running the organization and and meeting the goals that then priorities that we have set. So in my mind, we we leave the the structure of the organization in in his hands. And I think if if down the road, we see something we're concerned about, if we see too many managers all of a sudden popping up, then we have a conversation in private and we we say to Rob, it looks like we're top-heavy here. Uh, what's the deal? As opposed to having a uh a structure uh in in here that says for these particular moves, Rob's got to come to council. For these particular moves, he's okay to do it himself.
Not what I'm talking about at all. No, no, that's his responsibility. What I'm talking about, uh, Counselor Evans, is perhaps if he develops the org chart and he brings it to council and we have a look at it and we see, yeah, that looks great. Or maybe perhaps we could discuss that maybe we don't need, or maybe there's alternatives. That's all, and that's his responsibility. But I think council should have at least a look at what and because it is also a budgetary item. And I I think we should have some input in at least considerations of where this organization is going. I think that's our fiduciary that works. Duty.
Count, oh, go ahead, Counselor Evans.
And and yeah, I I'm not necessarily saying that 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 we shouldn't see an org chart. I I think that's a that's a reasonable request and 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 share any concerns. I guess my concern is when we, we don't want to start getting into the day-to-day uh shuffling of positions and and employees.
I I wonder if we couldn't just say establish
Far apart.
Organizational structures within the town and review with council?
So one of the things that is maybe different than it was a year ago is that the organizational structure is now posted on the website. Um, so that that information is out there. I mean, I can certainly bring it to council. Um, and we can have kind of the conversation if if there's questions about why it's bittering in some way. if there's questions about why it's been arranged some way. I would be concerned that in the C A O bylaw, you know, these are the principles governing. So you wouldn't typically in a bylaw like this include that we're going to have a conversation semi-annually about the org chart. So I mean, we can certainly do those things. I'm not sure if they belong here.
I think it would give us an idea of the direction that you're planning on taking this organization. Because right now, I don't have any idea what your plans are or where you're going with it. So I think that would give us some, at least would give me some comfort as knowing this is what your intentions are.
I'm going to go to Council McGee.
Well, and one of the things that, if we've heard it correctly, if it's can't be budgeted for, I can't be going down that road. But don't tie my hands. And I hear you saying, we're not trying to do that. But yet, and on the other hand, I hear you saying exactly that, is that I want to have a look at that structure and then I'm going to have to pick through and say, I don't think so. And I think we have to be really, really careful. I looked through the bylaw and didn't feel any uncomfortable, other than a few things around the money and the mayor's view. And I read the previous bylaw that was, and it was, it was not on, it was a two-pager that was quite similar, but not. And I really think that we, and if you read any of the guidance, municipal councillor this week has got really two good write-ups, one from Coffin, one from somebody else saying, governance, you're governance. You are not structure. Please stay out of that. Right? So I think once we start to drag ourselves into it, I'm with Council Evans, that I think we have enough to be able to figure it out. And when you suggest that we don't know where the organization is going, that's a different problem. That's not in, that you can write into this. But if you're feeling like you don't know where the organization is going, we have to have that discussion. And I think we've nailed down a couple of dates and times to have that discussion. So I think we can, personally, I think we should move this one forward and make sure that we have that discussion.
Council Ballas, is there something you wanted to add? No? Okay, so I'm needing a motion for first reading. Council Evans, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that council gives first reading to the chief administrative bylaw 2022 slash 10 slash A as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. I'll need a councillor to give a second reading, please. Council Evans, you give us second reading.
The council gives second reading to the chief administrative bylaw 2022 slash 10 slash A as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? All in favor? That is carried. So number three, is it that council consider giving third reading?
My recommendation is the wording be to move unanimous consent for third reading.
Okay, so we need to change that. Are we able to say that, though? Then we don't move to third and final reading?
Yeah. So if the unanimous, if the unanimous consent motion doesn't get unanimous consent, then the bylaw is delayed to the next council meeting for third and final.
I don't know if we can say that in a motion, though. That's why I was wondering if it shouldn't say that council consider giving, because then we need that unanimous with the consideration of the third.
Well, moving unanimous consent is essentially asking for unanimous consent.
But if I might, if in fact you were considering it and you have a majority that are considering it, it doesn't lose. It then moves to the third reading. Unanimous consent drops it to the next, to the next meeting.
Yeah, and it drops it to the next meeting, yeah.
So I've always understood it as, are we ready to consider the third reading? If we are, then let's have a vote on it. And if not, if we get a majority, we move. We don't, we don't.
Yeah. I think it's maybe just in the syntax of it. And I can pull some stuff out and see if there's one way better than the other. But for now, we can continue to do it that way.
Yeah. So what we're looking for is a consideration of third reading. So I need...
Mayor, I would make a motion that council considers giving third reading to the chief administrative bylaw 2022 10 dash A as presented.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Councillor, I was going to say Evans, but I'm going to say Council Clark.
So I guess to go back to Bill's point, I do see it from this perspective that these are taxpayers' dollars paying the salaries rate. In order for us to speak intelligently about where the taxpayers' dollars are going, I think we should understand, I guess, the organizational chart and not necessarily who the individuals are, but just kind of the overall vision. So I think that's a fair comment from Council Ballas. So let's give that some consideration.
Thank you very much for that, Council Clark. There is a motion that council consider giving third reading to the chief administrative bylaw 2022 10 A as presented. All in favor? That was unanimously carried. Yep. And now I will ask for a councillor to give third and final reading to the C O A, C O A, C A O bylaw 2022 10 A as presented. Council Clark?
Okay, I will move that council gives third and final reading to the chief administrative bylaw 2022 slash 10 slash A as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None? All in favor? That is carried. Did you get all that? Perfect. Okay. So we're going to move on to our last decision item, nine point 10, procedural bylaw. And it will work the same as we're looking for a unanimous, or it will hold and come back again.
That's right. Okay, so we have spoken about this bylaw before. The procedural bylaw is one of the requirements of the M G A. The M G A says that council will provide a bylaw outlining the conduct, expectations, and meeting parameters for council's meetings. So this bylaw, previously, council meetings were governed by two separate policies. This policy or bylaw seeks to combine those into the legislative tool outlined in the M G A. Important, or points of note, I guess, in section four, regular meetings of council, following the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, what we have outlined here is that regular council meetings would be conducted on every second Wednesday. And the policy or the bylaw no longer speaks to other meetings of council beyond special meetings. Council still does have the ability to hold planning meetings when they need to get together to talk about particularly information-receiving meetings. So sometimes you'll see those around strategic planning and those types of meetings. Also, in here we capture for the first time that it is our intention that meetings of council are to be streamed live, recorded, and published on the town's website. Also, that there is an ability for council members to participate remotely. Both of these things have been done in practice but are appropriately reflected in the bylaw. We do have a section that outlines some of the, we'll call it procedural items around motions. So there have been a couple of questions over the past few months about how different elements of motions work. So we talk beginning in section 33 about motions and debate. We talk about privileged motions, motions to recess, severing motions, amending motions, and motions to table, motions to end debate. So those are tools that are available for council. And so we've outlined here kind of what the purpose is and how they work. So particularly around the friendly amendment versus the motion to amend. And I think those are the highlights here that I like, that I wanted to bring to council's attention. There are a number of other elements of the bylaws. If council has any interest, we can certainly talk about any of them.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Council Clark. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Number five, special meetings of council. Do we need to, like, who calls those? Who has the authority to?
So in the M G A, they're called by the mayor or the person designated those responsibilities in the absence of the mayor. Essentially, any member of council or even myself can make the request of the mayor for a meeting.
So how would we go about if we wanted, sorry, how would we go, what if we wanted to request a planning meeting? Like hypothetically, excuse me, I look at this and I see that regular council meetings are every second week. So let's just say hypothetically, I'm like, well, every third week, I'd like to have a planning meeting. How would a person go about requesting that if just hypothetically asking for a friend?
So essentially, council has the ability to trigger a meeting like that. So if council was looking to pursue, it would be simply a matter of calling that type of meeting. So if we wanted to have a meeting to, a strategic planning meeting of council, it would simply be a matter of having them. Now, if the intention, though, was to create a regular planning meeting of council, then I think the appropriate thing to do would be to reflect that in the bylaw.
To add it here under meetings, then it would be, once a month, a planning meeting would be?
That's right.
That type of thing. Okay. Council Evans?
Just number 40 D says tablet the motion. I think that probably should be table the motion.
I caught that, too.
And it was brought to my attention, actually, that we had tabled a motion one time and then we had debate after it. And I was told that once you table a motion, there's no more discussion about it. It's tabled until you pull it off the table. So just a just a comment.
Thank you for that comment.
We're following the rules.
Yes, you were in that session. That's something that we learned at A M, E U M A, A U, A M?
Yeah. So we do have that element reflected here in 52. But, sorry, they had given you wording for a different kind of motion to send it to another meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I remember when you guys came out and said that. Aren't that it?
Yeah, no. So we can, we can certainly make that amendment to the bylaw to add...
Where? In 40 E?
Postpone the motion.
Table the motion, postpone the motion.
So I think what we'd do is we'd add a new section under 52, under motion to table. We'll add a motion to postpone and then identify the difference between the two.
So that, would that be E, then?
No, it would be, it would be a new 53.
So it would be a 53?
Yeah.
And it would be a motion to postpone?
Yeah. And then the difference will be that a tabling motion is for the same meeting?
Right.
And the postponement is to a future meeting?
And just to be clear, if you're in 52, it may be raised from the table at any time by a majority vote of council. I think what they're speaking to is that if there's a tabling motion, it cannot be debated, cannot be debated, but you still have to ask for a question. And if majority of council doesn't agree with the tabling motion, you can bring it off the table. Do I read that right?
Yeah. So essentially, to bring it back from the table, there needs to be a motion of council to bring it back to discussion. You make a motion to put it down, you make a new motion to pick it up.
If your motion isn't carried, it's not automatically picked up, then the motion is a bit confusing.
Yeah. I think the legislative component will have to look into is what happens if a motion isn't picked up. So if the motion to pick an item up from the table failed, what does that do if the meeting ends? Anyway, I'll do the legwork and figure out the answer to that. Okay, so we do have an amendment. So it's to add that section, a motion to postpone.
I'm just wondering, I know that there was a, I'm going to be the one that's going to start this, guys. And if there is an appetite, because I just want to make sure that everybody's feeling comfortable because we're switching directions a little bit, then we've kind of had regular meetings in G and P, and then we had planning meetings in regular, now we're going back to regular meetings, so that everybody's clear that there would not be a planning meeting that's not included in this. So if we want it to, then it would have to be reflected under the meetings of council as if we wanted to incorporate it. So just...
So I see the regular meetings, sorry, Rick.
Go ahead, Council.
Regular meetings are now being requested every second Wednesday. So that would be two per month? Is that what you're saying, for regular meetings?
Yeah.
And then we'd have no planning meeting?
Yeah. So if you were interested, then now would be the time to say to amend it. So then there would be, I think Rob said, rather than just call planning meetings, that we would say, once every four weeks, six weeks, there's a planning meeting or something, right, to gather information or something if we wanted to?
Like the last Wednesday in the month or something?
Could you do the, or the call of the chair?
So I think the idea being that the way it sits, you could have an occasional planning meeting at the call of the chair. But if you're looking to have a regular meeting, it should be outlined in your procedural bylaw. So if we're talking that it would be once a month, then that should be reflected here. Because it's currently, what's proposed here is a regular meeting every second week, and everything else would be considered extraordinary, occasional.
Yeah. A regular council, just like today, yeah.
Twenty-four to 26 meetings, depending on whether we're going to meet on every second week in December, January, and August. And they would all be public meetings.
I know Council Glamanna is not with us today, that that was something that he, speaking on behalf of him, that he would like to see continue, would be somehow for the planning meetings to be incorporated. For consideration, Council Sheriffs?
Well, I think it's okay to say that we can have the two regular meetings every second weekend and then planning meeting at call of the chair. Is there anything wrong with putting that?
Do we need to put that in there, then?
No. If it's not a regular meeting, it doesn't need to be reflected in the procedural bylaw.
Pardon me?
Just a planning meeting.
Just a planning, right, if we felt that we needed more information or things are, you know, or we, I guess depending on what comes out of a regular council meeting, right? If we're feeling like, you know, we really need to talk this out, or we need to sit down and figure out, then maybe that would be an opportunity to say, hey, let's call a planning meeting, right? Kind of thing?
You can always table stuff, too.
Yeah.
And having the meetings every two weeks, I just think will get through more stuff instead of considering it previously in the planning meeting and then making the decision in the, in the... decision in the, in the council meeting. But like I said, we also have the option, if we want to give it further consideration, we can, we can table something and two weeks later, it's, it's right there again, so, you know.
To have more information.
Yeah, other than the, than the really time sensitive stuff, we, we have some flexibility there, I guess is what I'm trying to get across.
So if we wanted additional information, just kind of having this information now that Councilor Evans and Councilor Ballas are saying, we technically couldn't table, we'd have to postpone until further information is provided, is that, I just, I'm just trying to clarify, we've got some new information that's been, we've learned at A M this year?
Yeah, so s- same process, but yes, the, the, the name of the tool would be to postpone.
Till, till we gather the information to make that decision again.
And I, and I think the issue is that that's a rather new perspective, that there's two different tools.
Yeah.
And so I think tabling's what we would have called it before.
Okay.
So, but yeah, it's same, same tool, different name.
Okay, perfect. So if there's no other questions for administration, I think that Councilor Clark was willing to make that motion a few minutes ago, if that still stands?
So I think I'm seeing.
We're looking for first reading, sorry.
Oh, we're looking for first reading, okay. Do we want with an amendment or?
Oh, that's right, with amendment, yes, with amendment.
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
And, and it's a single amendment to add a section, motion to postpone. You don't, yeah, we got that amendment.
So rather than present it as amended.
I move that council gives first reading to procedural bylaw, bylaw twenty-twenty-two slash thirteen slash A with amendments.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay, perfect. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, is there a council that would like to give second reading as amended? Councilor Sheriffs?
I'd like to make a motion that the council gives second reading to the procedural bylaw twenty-twenty-two slash thirteen slash A as amended.
Thank you very much for that, any questions, comment or debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, is there a member of council that would like to consider giving third reading as amended? Councilor McGee?
Senator Mayor, I would make a motion that council consider giving third reading to the procedural bylaw twenty-twenty-two thirteen A as presented or as amended.
Thank you very much for that, any comment, question, debate on the motion? Oh, no, okay, all in favor? Okay, that's carried, and I need one more motion for third and final reading. Councilor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council gives third and final reading to the procedural bylaw twenty-twenty-two slash thirteen slash A as amended.
Perfect, thank you very much, any comment, question or debate on that? All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Bill.
I'm gonna have to read that into my repertoire.
Okay, Pam and Bree, did you get everything? You did, perfect, okay, so that is it for our decision items and we'll jump into our department reports. Ten point one is our planning and development report, and this is you, right? I see you twice on here. Yep. You're gonna do ten point one and then ten point two perhaps?
Good afternoon, council, your worship. The planning report, basically some of the activities, the development activities and the amendments, council got a, a sense of some of those this morning and this afternoon. We also move forward on the MDP, giving that official status now and that is a project. A new preliminary inquiry has come in on a potential communications tower being located in the vicinity of the RCMP building, so we're just presently gathering information and kind of, it'll be kind of looking at that process as it continues. It's really a, we're up, we, the town does not make a decision on that, we're only the caretaker of the process, it's a, it's a federal decision, but we put input into the, the stakeholder information they're gathering. So we'll keep a watch on that. And the survey plan for the airport's underway, that'll be, they'll be on site at the end of October, putting pins in the ground and, and for our leased lots and for the, the properties and also pairing an Asbeld for us, so we'll have the best information we've ever had for the airport. That concludes planning report.
Thank you very much for that, any questions? Councilor Ballas?
Thank you, Ken, just what, we have a communication tower at a public works building.
Yes.
That's something that can't be incorporated or we can get revenue out of?
Well, this is a private, this is a private vendor, so the only concern with our, with our tower and with the RCMP tower, of course, is if there'd be any interference, and so those are some of the issues we'd be, we'd be moving through in this, in their engagement process.
Yes, thank you, any other questions? No, thank you very much, and we'll move on to planning and growth and you're presenting this as well?
Yeah, basically I'll present, I guess, ten point nine as well, is, is part of the same thing. So the, the economic development group, they've been very busy with new businesses and stuff, three new businesses in September, Soulgood Health, Messy, Squibblers and KCC Cleaning are our new businesses in town. We've been continually working with our consultant on the strategic plan and so that is getting close to being finalized. And of course, we attended the job fair over at the, the Omniplex, so it was a good move, there was a lot of people there and businesses, so that's why they went over there. The chamber has been having some meetings as well and sort of awards for the Small Business Week and also a, a presentation from a, a private company for some of their technology. Attended the EDA conference in, I believe it was in Calgary, which is a major economic development conference. Education, there's basically four items that they've been working on, the career fair, the U of A research project, the education training and open house and the education strategic plan. So those are all moving forward. And in energy, we have lost our staff person for that, and so we're, we're, we're trying to continue the work on the audit with the consultant, that will still be completed by before the end of the year. And the other projects, we're, we're figuring out which to, how, how they'll continue on. So that concludes the growth report.
Thank you very much for that, any, any questions?
Two quick questions, is the consultants have completed the sidewalk through as part of the energy audit, so we, we have lost a staff member, but we've hired a consultant?
This, through to Councilor McGee, this is our building audit project, so they're kind of two different things, the staff was, was our internal staff, this was the project we did hire a consultant for to carry out this work, so they're continuing the work as contracted.
And, and we would have, all the I's and T's are, are on that contract, we, we're well, what's going and how it's going to come about and?
Yes.
Okay, and a second question on the chamber are holding awards, do you know when the award ceremony, I saw that, but it's.
I'm not aware, Councilor McGee.
Uh, so for the, for the chamber, next Wednesday at seven o'clock at CTC.
Okay, good, thanks.
And then also as Ken had noted as well, there is the education open house on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, from three to six, with all of the education partners as well at the CTC, so a couple of things in our calendars coming up, so if you're able to attend, we encourage you to be there. Well, thank you very much for that and we'll move along to municipal services, ten point three.
Shelley isn't here today and she didn't have a written report in the package, there are a couple of other senior leadership team members that aren't here, so I think the only one that provided a written report is Jen with the communications report, so when you're ready, I'll speak to that one, but I think Hans is the, the only other report we have.
Sure, we'll ask Hans to come down and share his report with us.
Thank you Chair and through to the rest of council, so my apologies, there was a written report, but there was a wrong one, so didn't make into the package. So for ECDC, Christopher Smith from the Mutark Foundation held a folks group meeting in here with stakeholders and there was basically to discuss and meet what kind of supports childcare sector should, could utilize for workforce retention. ECDC shared also a family engagement survey, which they do with a couple of questions to our, let's say, community members that have kids in ECDC and there's feedback on that and I can share that on paper with you as well. The FCS S board will meet on October fourteenth this week, Erin Mills, she joined the FCS S program team as an assistant, she will be covering for Crystal Kotick, she's with maternity leave at the moment. And Indigenous training is continuing as well for our staff members, so October thirteenth and seventeenth, we'll do additional training again with our elders for our internal staff. We did have at the round dance approximately six hundred people joining and that was of course held on September thirtieth, our national day of truth and reconciliation. We do thank all the community members that came out and all the organizations that participated, the sponsors that we had to build our relationships with our indigenous neighbors. So of course, there's a whole list of sponsors that were involved, but of course, a couple of them are for, let's say, more involved than others, but for sure, the multi-cultural youth society and our elders that were there, much appreciated. The Omniplex Center, the curling rink ice is being installed at the moment and we'll be using that straight away, let's say as soon as it's completely ready, of course. The Jingle Ball planning for later in December is on its way, the first event is already booked full, so there's only tables available for the second event night. For the Park Valley Pool, and basically for the new Omni, for the new aquatic center, we are still hiring staff, so we have a basically constantly refresh of new and, and additional staff members to make sure that we have enough staff when we start opening our new facility. And that includes as well that we are now doing a round of an aquatic center clerk position, so the front desk basically to support that team over there in the new building. Recreation, we are discussing putting in a Croco curling, so that's crokinol and curling combined surface at the pickleball court across from the Omniplex and talking about the park place skating location there as well, so looking basically forward to temperatures going to the minus, sorry for that. The triathlon committee came together, we are talking about downsizing the event based on relocating to the new pool facility, of course, with focusing more on the local and youth, so maybe a smaller event for our kids to get everybody involved locally, but maybe a mad motto sanctioned event can be part of it, so we are meeting again with the triathlon Alberta to make sure that we have something in place or at least getting ready for the future for a triathlon event there as well, so we're not excluding or putting everything totally on the, in the fridge, but we are looking at our opportunities still. Working with pickleball is a group that of course is still outside, but looking for their indoor options, they have organized it themselves if they can, but we're looking for support there as well and helping them out for the winter season. That concludes the items for our department, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, any questions for Hans?
The Ricochet Pool, the timing, should we, is it time for a tour or is it anything like that going that we should be paying attention to?
So thank you for that question, Councilor McGee and through the Chair, so we are still in the planning, of course, what the opening and the process looks like, we are in the latest stages of, let's say, the tiling is a big job at the end of the process, the installation of the slide is part of that, so we are looking into planning how that looks with the training, the exact opening date for portion or the full facility and transition from the old pool to the new pool, so we are still working on that and we are looking forward to have that late in the fall. The slide is basically on its way on a boat. Not arrived yet.
Thank you, any other questions? No, well, thank you very much for your report, and then we do have a paper copy of communications report in front of us, just want to put out there that free tipping days, we have a few dates that, that's happening in the community, that's where you can go to our landfill and the fees are waived at the scale, those are October fourteenth and fifteenth, October twenty-first and twenty-second. And I just want to clarify, typically, we've been closed on Sundays now, so we are reopening for these free tipping days, or are we opening now for winter months?
I need to confirm what those dates are there, just a moment.
For the summer, we were.
So the fourteenth, fifteenth and twenty-first, twenty-second are Friday Saturdays?
Are Friday Saturdays, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought they were Saturday and Sundays, they are Friday and, yes, Saturdays, so anybody looking to get rid of any odds and ends around and do some fall cleanup, please take advantage of that. We also have some highlights and things like that, that will be coming out in the paper in our forms of social media, there's the recreation fee assistance program that's happening, deadlines are approaching for community grants, advertising is going out for the tip program, so if you're interested, sign up for that, utility e-billing options for residents also is happening, did you want to add something, Mr. Osmond, to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that one, when Elvira was here at the last meeting talking about the tax e-billing, we mentioned that it was very similar to the utility billing and the general thought was that we did not communicate that that program existed well enough, so it has been around for quite some time, we've gone out again to, to advertise to all the customers, we typically take advantage of any sign-ons or sign-offs to, to try to encourage people onto that program, but, but it is certainly very beneficial, it streamlines receiving bills for individuals, but it also addresses some of the difficult parts of getting paper bills out to people, so certainly if, I'd encourage everybody here, if you haven't considered it yet, to consider it, and that if we can get that message out and wide, that'd be really good.
Perfect, thank you very much for that, and just wanted to add that, an education piece on the smell that's coming from our wastewater treatment plant was, excuse me, was posted on Facebook and our website, the town website and things like that, council is in the process of having conversations if there's anything else that we can be doing in regards to this, so as we proceed, you know, and get more information from our water treatment staff, we will let you know on ways that perhaps we can be mitigating the odor that is happening in the community. For those of you that haven't read the, the paper and are online, what we're hearing or understanding is that the odor is caused by a lack of precipitation, which has created a low level of dilution in the wastewater ponds, so. So, if you want to log on to our website or on to our Facebook page, there's a little bit more detail and reasons why, and like I said, we'll be looking to other ways that we could perhaps mitigate this, and we will keep you apprised as we move forward. And I think that this kind of sums it up for communications that are going out, and that is it for, I think, administrations besides going into closed reports, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so rather than go into closed right now, I think what we'll do is we have administration here, is we'll quickly go through the rest of the agenda, and before we adjourn, we'll go into, circle back around and go into closed, if that works, okay? Okay, perfect, I'll now move to councillor reports, and councillor Clark, you are up first.
I attended the RCMP ball, not last weekend, the weekend before. Well-attended, kind of a neat thing where, you know, I think it was the first time in 25 years they've held the RCMP ball, regimental ball in Drayton Valley, so, you know, had members from pretty much all over Alberta, which is kind of neat. And they gave a history on the RCMP and kind of what it means to be part of the force, which was kind of neat as well. So, it was a good time there. Attended the RPAP conference on and off, again, very well-attended. We had folks from Rainbow Lake all the way to Tabor that came, and they were councillors, they were folks that were similar in nature to, you know, people that are on our, what's it called, the doctor, physicians recruitment committee, so similar folks attended that. So, that was three years in the making, so that was really good. Got some complaints about the smell around town. Attended the municipalities, Alberta Municipalities Conference a couple weeks ago, and that was always well, very well-attended, and we learned a lot there. And then homelessness forum, we had another one of those, was it Monday? Monday. We had good attendance. We do have another meeting scheduled for October 24th. You know, we had a pretty good discussion on a warming center and, you know, questions around that from the various groups that attended. So, we got some figuring out to do on that, as well as we had talked about doing a census, or what are we calling that? A survey of the homeless folks in town to get a sense of needs and wants and current situation, so that'll be coming down the pipe here eventually. So, that's what I have for councillor reports.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Evans.
Well, yeah, also attended the conference in Calgary. Lots of good stuff going on there. Lanterns on the Pond, which was enjoyable, lots of happy kids, and got to roll around in our boat, which was pretty exciting in that stinky water. But I think it, we pulled it off pretty good, I, I think everybody enjoyed themselves. You know, haven't done a lot else, attended the Round Dance, which I thought was impressive, the number of people that showed up for that, was good to see. Also received a comment on the, the piece of land behind IGA, the folks across the street from it were very happy to see that, that grass cut down, so good on staff for getting to it. I think that's, that's about it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. So, the folks across the street, were those the Evans that live within the vicinity? No, other, other neighbors, other neighbors of that, yeah. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Sheriff?
So, we had Eagle Point Blue Rapid Board Meeting, and there was a few things that came out of that, it was, it was actually pretty good. Then attended the Alberta Municipalities as well, and that was a lot of fun and very informative, the team building was also fun. And the meeting earlier today with the Wildrose School Division, I think that was a really good conversation we had with them, and it went really well. That's it.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Councillor McGee?
Well, the only thing I would mention, besides the other things that, that we've done, is that I thought, as Councillor Evans suggested, the Round Dance was terrific. I had no concept of how that was going to roll out, and it went very, very well. And they were reading out the sponsors, the, the list is, is long, and so I assume it was carried out with very little municipal money, and it just, just happened, and I thought it was just terrific. And just the ability to, to recognize, and then also, as we continue our Indigenous training for our staff, is that recognition that we're, that we're taking it in a, in a whole new way, and I think with our relationships with the Sunchild and O'Cheese Group, we just need to really keep piling on that and keep staying connected. So, that's the big one for me.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor Ballas?
Thank you. So, on the 16th of September, we had that meeting in the MLA's office with Symbiotic, and hopefully we'll have some follow-up on that.
The one you weren't supposed to have.
Sorry, I missed that. I missed that.
Nothing, I'm just having fun.
We then attended the Alberta Municipal Convention in Calgary. On the 26th, we had Lanterns on the Pond, on the 27th, we had PPRC meetings, and some sad news from that is that one of our members passed away, and our condolences go out to our local dentist, Dr. John. We had a planning meeting on the 28th, Round Dance on the 30th, assisted with the setup before the conference, and then we had the mayor's conference, coffee on Monday the 11th, or Tuesday the 11th. I found that very interesting. Out of that meeting, we came up, it wasn't a large crowd, but it was a exciting crowd. But one item that came up from some of the ladies that were attending was the establishment of an arts council. And I'm not sure if there ever was one here or not, but maybe that's something we can go back and check on and see if there was. Another item that was brought up, I'm not sure if you were going to mention this.
No, you're going to mention it all, Bill, thank you.
Was in, is in transportation, and what's the potential perhaps of getting our local Drake's bus here to at least schedule once a week, where they could have a shuttle bus and take the seniors around, whether it starts at Walmart, Canadian Tire, or whatever, drop them off, pick them up two hours later. One concern with the dog bylaw, but that, that's, that's been followed up. Community garden, some of the ladies were talking about a community garden, and then the other one is the museum. And I, I think that it's imperative that a tour of the museum be organized, so that all council can go down there and, and see what is there, and what really needs to be done, because right, right now, there's basically very few volunteers, and, and one lady that's basically guiding the whole thing, and if you go down there and see the artifacts, it's amazing what they have, and if there ever was a disaster there, because we don't have proper storage there at all, we would lose so many artifacts that it would be disheartening. So, it, I think a tour would be nice to have in order, and everyone could see exactly what's, what's down there, and I think she's going to make a presentation for that to happen eventually. And that's my report.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, I think that Pam was going to coordinate something with Pam, I was like, with the other Pam, to see some potential dates if we can get there before the snow drops and have a little tour of the museum. I know that the new councillors haven't had the opportunity to have that tour yet, so hopefully we can do that, and if not, then we'll be looking at spring for sure. I think one of the other things that was discussed also was communities in bloom, and we didn't really have all the answers for that. I know that we've had a discussion of bringing it back or what's happening, so maybe we can follow up with kind of what was, what is happening with that as well. So, thank you very much for that. For me, yeah, it's been a busy month already, we jumped back into it with September, and I imagine, you know, as we go into budget, we'll continue to, to be busy. Like everybody had said, we attended the Alberta Municipal Municipalities, I still struggle with that, conference. During that time, we also had the opportunity to meet with K Division, so we had some questions for them, so we're just waiting for that correspondence to come back to us in regards to, you know, overtime and the amount of time officers spend between the county and in town and things like that. We talked about the, the pact program and other things, so we're just kind of waiting for that communication to come back. As councillor Evans had said, Lanterns on the Pond was another success this year, it was nice, we were able to use the boat, and it was nice to see all the councillors come and get excited about it, and get out there in the boat, and I seen you guys made the paper, and you looked fantastic, so thank you, yes, you made the paper. So, thank you all for, you know, helping with that, and I'm imagining that everybody will be fighting to put their name on that committee when, at our next meeting for organizational, if there's more boat activities, I think that there'll be probably four or five councillors that are wanting to sit on that committee, I'm hoping, right? So, that was great. The Round Dance was fantastic, to hear that there was over 600 attendees is fantastic, it was a great evening. I wasn't able to dance all night, you know, and kudos to those that do dance all night, that's amazing, so, you know, thanks, everybody, for coming out and for the amazing food, and dancers, and drummers, and everybody that made that event happen, it was fantastic. I attended the RPAP Conference as well, and that was a good conference, it was nice to see, yeah, other municipalities here, mayors and councillors, and, you know, Alberta Health Services, education, I know that we had a booth there for zero fee tuition and our education program, and I couldn't believe how swamped we were, with people were literally lined up, Jen had to run and get extra help to answer all the questions. People were very intrigued with what we're doing here when it comes to the zero fee, and that we're offering the healthcare aid program, and that we're looking to also bring nursing programs here, so councillor from Westlock actually wants to bring a tour of all of their council down to, to learn more about our zero fee and what we're doing here, and the mayor from Provost, as well as the mayor from, oh my goodness, I cannot remember, but I did write it down somewhere, there was a few other want to come and do a tour, so I thought it was fantastic. And as Deputy Mayor Ballas had said, we had lost a member of our Pembina Physician Recruitment Committee, and it's very sad news, so as he said, our condolences and thoughts and prayers are with the Zeljzynak family, and we're very sad to see, to see that happen in our community. I also attended the homeless forum with Colin on Monday, and we're looking at putting a, a date together to get that survey out as well, and that wraps up all of council's reports. So, we'll move into our council standing items, council initiated items, I'm not sure if anybody has anything here. I just had two things, Lola had requested that we rebook a couple of dates for Dr. Unger to come, so maybe after our meeting, we could just spend a minute and pick a couple of potential dates, and then we can send them out and see if they work, so kind of look through your calendars now. Next week, we have, we're double booked for, I'm not sure which date it is, for the new funeral home, as well as Points West is their one-year anniversary. I will be away at an appointment in Edmonton, but I will be trying to make it back to, to stop by, I'm going to reach out to Betty at Points, at Points West, to see if there was a specific time she wanted anybody to come, otherwise, I have asked Bill if he could perhaps give two speeches, if not, maybe somebody else could give one of the speeches at one of the other places, so I'll kind of maybe coordinate that behind the scenes, we can figure out who's kind of going where, and have representation at either both or opposites of those that are coming up. It'll kind of continue probably to get busy now with things back on and lots happening in the community. That's kind of all that I have, I don't know if there's any other updates or meetings and or conferences that anybody wants to kind of throw out there. Councillor Ballas, or Deputy Mayor Ballas?
I was just going to ask a question, because I see we, tomorrow, we're booked for an agenda setting for a planning meeting, are, are we continuing with this month?
We're going to, it will have changed with passing of the procedure bylaw, so we're going to have to reset all those dates, but we don't need a agenda setting tomorrow.
Good eye. Okay, anything else that councillor or council has to bring up? Councillor Clark, sure?
So, we have the Chamber Awards on October 19th, which we already talked about this Wednesday. We have the work, for us, the workplace WHAVP training.
Yeah.
Violence on, October 25th, November 1 and 2, we're away for that strategic plan.
Sorry, October 25th.
That's for that workplace, well, for me.
For you.
Workplace hazard.
As well as open house education.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then November 7th, we have that JSG, the Community Justice Centre Engagement as well, somewhere in town, we don't know where it is.
What was that?
That was sent out a while ago.
Can you remind me what that was?
So, I think we had to reply and, yeah, Community Justice Centre Engagement Session in Drayton Valley on September 7th, we had to respond and give us... I think there's a whole bunch of different things, but I think that's...
Did we miss the, or did we miss the deadline?
Oh, no, sorry.
Could you maybe forward that back out, Pam or Bree, just so we could have a look at it? What's that, Bill? Who is? Oh, she's doing it? Oh, okay, I was lost there. Anything else, Colin?
No.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Discussion on the lunch on Friday for an engineer?
Yes, sorry, I had received a couple of questions, I hadn't responded to them yet, but council has received an invitation from MP Engineering, so it, it is common for engineering firms, when they're coming through areas, will often sit down with councils. MP has done some work here in the past, and undoubtedly, they are interested in new opportunities that might be on the horizon as they start to plan their upcoming year. Yes.
I think we feel comment, or confident that administration's got this one.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so he had spoken with a couple of you at the Alberta Municipalities Convention, and they happened to be coming through, so they put out the invitation, and so if there's anybody wanting to, to join us, we'll certainly do that, and if not, administration will, with the help of councillor McGee, can, will certainly keep them entertained.
Perfect, thank you very much. And what's happening this week, or any roundtable discussion? Nope, we're all good, okay, I think that's it. We have a couple information items, the action tracking sheet, letter, and Annie will report from North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance Enforcement Services Satisfactory and Priorities Survey, and the upcoming meetings and or conferences. Is there a member of council that would like to accept these items as information? Councillor Sheriffs, thank you very much, all in favor? That is Carrie, and before we adjourn the meeting, we are going to move into closed, is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed, that is back at 10.7? Councillor Sheriffs? Okay, and that is under 241A of the FOIP section, all in favor? Did you get that? That's Carrie. Okay, and we are in, moving into closed, in closed. Five, you've got five minutes, yep. We got five, what was I going to say, add in there, add... We got five, what was I going to say, add in there, add?